Board and residents and other community. Okay, we'll start off the monthly report on Honolulu Department. We need to, there is Mike and myself, we need to talk to each other.
H M Z? I did see them on earlier, they might have had to step away from.
Let's go ahead and skip them, and then we'll come back to them. Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Ege with District Three. So for the month of September, there were six motor vehicle thefts as compared to seven last month. There were four burglary reports as compared to nine last month. There were thirty different theft cases reported as compared to twenty-two last month. And eight unauthorized entry into motor vehicle cases as opposed to nineteen last month. Total calls for service for the month of September was five thousand eight hundred and forty calls. As compared to the month of August, which was six thousand two hundred and eighty calls for service. That's it.
Okay, board members, any questions for HPD? Hey, nothing here. Before we go into the community members, I do have some notes that. So at the Lava Park, or not, yeah, the Lava Park. I actually went down there, we've had some residents concerned about loud music being played, multiple different things. One of the things that was occurring down there, I don't necessarily know if it's still happening or not, but what they're doing is they're utilizing the tennis courts and the people that are doing that are double parking to cut off the parking lot so other people can park there. I walked around the clipboard and just was really loud about it. And the next couple of weeks, they stopped doing it because they probably thought like, you know, you guys would show up. But I think it's probably prudent of you to just randomly go down there every now and then, drive through that parking lot, make sure they're not doing that anymore.
Sure, no problem. Is there a particular time of day that the problem is more evident than others?
Yeah, so they're doing it around like between five and seven. It seems like right after work, they go there, you know, and all they're doing is like playing tennis, right? But what they want to do is they want, they're bringing alcohol in there and then they just block off the parking lot so nobody bothers them.
Ah, I understand. Yeah.
Yeah.
No problem.
So just the idea of randomly going down there and maybe ticketing them would keep them from doing it. I mean, me just going down there with the clipboard and being a little loud about like, hey, I'll tell HPD about this, stop them from doing it for like a week and a half or two weeks. So, so I think if you guys just did that, that would probably be sufficient.
Sure, no problem. What I'll do is I'll address that concern in my after-action report for my watch lieutenant. And then the watch lieutenant can then dispatch the officers on a more regular basis.
Okay, cool, cool. Let's see what else was there. I think that really was about it. And some of the stuff you guys just can't really like, if they're barbecuing and there's no real like signage that says can. You know, I mean, some of the homeowners live around there, they kind of understand that they live next to a park, right? People are getting used to the park. So, so, but yeah, yeah, this was definitely one of the things where I saw that you guys could definitely have an impact on it. So, I did have another concern as well, too. Over here, right down the road, there's like the Shell gas station. They're utilizing the Sun Street to park their cars around that area. It has some board members mentioned, or not board members, but residents mentioned that committee as well. I've actually driven over there a few times randomly, I've not seen any vehicles open there. So I don't know how much of an issue it is at the moment. I guess that's something maybe you guys could just keep passing on to.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what was that concern at Shell again, precisely?
Shell, right across from the Times over here.
Mm-hmm. And it's parking concerns there?
Yeah, they're like, they're fixing bars wherever they take the excess cars and park them around the screens around.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll double check to make sure that they're not in any kind of violation as far as signage is concerned.
Yeah.
Whatever cars are in violation, I'll add that to my after-action report and have our patrol officers take a closer look at that as well.
Okay, alright. Board members, anything else before moving to community? Any members, any questions for HPD? Sergeant, thank you for coming today. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, go ahead, sir.
Come on, Honolulu Street, going southbound across the town limits. Notice the city buses are staging, going southbound. So right there comes off by Central Bus Stop. And you try to make a left turn going northbound of Honolulu, the buses block near you. Is it possible that buses could be there?
Is there a bus stop nearby?
No, the buses are just staging, I got two buses all in line, they're sitting there.
Okay, what, and I'm sorry, what street again was that at?
Honolulu across from Honolulu.
Okay, okay, I know what you're talking about now. I'll get in touch with OTS and for them, and for them your concerns as well.
Because if you are allowed, I'm not sure if you can tell that shopping center to make a left turn. Without even able to see around the bus, they're coming down kind of fast.
I understand. Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, yeah, it is a concern. I'll bring that up with OTS as well.
I do.
Alright, thank you so much for coming, much appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Border Water Supply, Tracy. Where do you want this?
Good evening. I'm here to give the first thing is the main break. There were three main breaks reported in September for this neighborhood. That was on September second, it was a sixteen inch main break on West Street. There was on September twelve inch main break on W Street. And on number twenty and ninety-nine, or ninety-nine, twelve fifty. This is our general water nonsense, border waters, but like everybody. It's not only border waters, but there is other cities, a community organization. That put together this year's imaginary game without water yet. It will be held Saturday, October twenty-first from ten AM to two PM at the Freshwater State Recreation Area. We're going to be having food, interactive activities. The purpose of this is to educate the public about the importance of one water time. And the impacts of climate change today. So some of the cool activities we're offering that day is rain barrel. There is skate sand cram activity, freshwater dishing activity, making Yankee ball. Which is a wild combination that means water. Must still have, will have a little bit of truck. Website, this year, borderwatersupply.com slash one water Hawaii. And then there was a question from September. That the question was, this year, does the border waters have any say about large service tanks? Or the Navy will be putting your into after you do a rain. This question was asked by a community member. So our response to that is border waters was not halted. The area, however, has the chaprock layer that allows for little drainage into the water table. As the tanks are above ground, which border waters.
Any, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, any questions for border waters supply? Alright, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for border waters supply? Yeah, please go ahead.
Are there any other property other than. Make that a possibility to the ocean, I believe. Because of the past history, it's not that I'm small, we're gonna do like gallons, we're gonna have hundreds of gallons. So just wondering what kind of precaution are there so that as good as they are, you protect them. By the way, but I don't have any properties with that.
Yeah, I don't think that's a question you can answer. That's a Navy question. Okay. Okay, alright, any other questions? Okay, alright, thank you Tracy. Okay, Donnie, Honolulu Rail Transit. So just a heads up for the board, this will be Johnny's last briefing. So yes, I know, we've all come to love and care about. We're sad to see you go, so. Yes, you are. So for the future, we have hard questions. Either, you know, I either email him directly, or if you want, you can go through me and I'll get the answers from him. So I know where he lives, so I'll just go over there and get that. Yes. Okay, Donnie, go ahead.
I've been in our town, we acted on our credit disarray of light. Part of times, we saw the garbage, it's called off the bridge, might be. That is still yet to be designed and approved, but that will come up. Upper segment two areas, uh, several lost stadium to the middle street, and we have the center. Right seeing, looking at segment, high degree construction done, station constructed, uh, station constructed. In the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. Station of itachis, uh, core systems components, so electrical, communication systems, train control, signaling equipment, that's all ongoing. We're selling at the middle station. Station and. Expect to complete transfer of segment two, permanent transportation. Last segment that ours working on, three to. Off the top street. Till the work continues on Billyam. Middle street to High Street. And our downtown usually contract. Contract for the city center guideway and stations. Part one, other request for proposals is due later this year in December. Heart expects to award the contract for the last guideway and stations in mid twenty twenty-four. If you have any interest in keeping up with heart construction information, we have a project website, honolulutransit.org. We have a twenty-four hour project hotlines in my left pocket, it's eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine. You feel free to call for any questions you have over the phone. If you prefer to submit a written or email question, our project email is info@honolulutransit.org. And just a quick plugs for City Department of Transportation Services, again, they manage day-to-day operations. So if you have questions with regard to the schedule, bus rail integration, ridership numbers, that sort of thing. I'd like to do, I refer to DTS, they have a website, it's honoluludotgov slash skyline. And they also have a hotline, eight oh eight eight four eight five 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 five, option number four. And that number is the same for the bus and for the skyline customer service, but it's an automated system that you can call in. Navigate to what your questions, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
I want to apologize to the online community, we were having some audio technical issues. What's that?
New system.
New system, yes, working out the gremlins. Okay. Board members, any questions for heart? Email.
Again, it's more of a DTS question, but I do know, because I looked up their website, honoluludotgov slash skyline has a link that shows ridership numbers on the left column of the page. I think for September, there are about ninety thousand riders for that month. Of course, that was an uptick because of the schools and, you know, session starting up for LCC and that side. But again, that's normally a DTS question, the website has that information, they have a ridership tally for all the months since we started opening a service.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, community members, any questions for heart? Okay, nothing hurts. Alright, thanks. Oh, sorry. Okay. Alright, thank you, Donnie. Okay, Chris and Samantha, Stadium Authority.
Hello, Chair Wood, members of the board and members of the community. As we reported last month, we were successfully finishing up our market sounding. And now we're incorporating all of that feedback along with our own due diligence to wrap up what we need to do to start the procurement process on time before the end of this year. And that does keep us on schedule to look for an opening season in two thousand twenty-eight for the UH football season. We do want to share that we did outreach in the last couple of weeks. Within the last two and a half weeks, we had separate meetings with Governor Green, with leaders of the House and the Senate. And they are still engaged and actively supporting our project. September twenty-seventh, we gave joint presentations, the PBX twenty-three conference. And that's a conference for our consultants and contractors, the industry type of audience. It was a joint presentation with the old CCC project, and they said, and our topic was partnering for revitalization. The real key issue that we recall was the community involvement and the value that we get for both projects. Stay active with you and getting your feedback. We also want to share information on the Halaba TOD master plan as that is moving through the city in Kali of Honolulu. Honestly, to becoming zoning, so the next meeting is a zoning committee meeting on October eighteenth. That is open to the public, so we invite all of you to participate in that meeting. We also submit our own testimonial support. And then with that, passing the third and final reading of the bill, which comes through as Bill's number fifty and fifty-one will be heard on November first. So the hearing done, the zoning would become effective immediately, so that's something to stay abreast of. If you have any questions or information, we can share the TOD website and that. But again, we encourage your active participation. Last but not least, I just wanted to share a screen and share that we did have two newsletters that we shared in September. We talked about the September eighth newsletter in the last monthly update with you. And the second newsletter was issued on September twenty-fifth. So we do have project updates more pertinent to the market sounding. We do share a little bit of a clip in the news on that. We provide FAQs and how the community can continue to be involved throughout the procurement process. And we do intend that to continue with the development teams as well. We share a little bit about what's going on at Oahu Stadium, and that's what Sammy can cover with us in a minute. We share upcoming events, including the swap meet and marketplace blood drive later this month. And what we really want to highlight for the newsletter is it does include access to a survey. You can either get it through the newsletter or go straight to our website, nasid.hawaii.gov. And what we're looking for is your feedback on what works and doesn't work for you in the newsletter so that we can continue to be pertinent and address your issues and interests. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass on to Samantha.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Okay, so just going after the newsletter, we've also started on our social media platforms what we're calling Future Fridays. And these are all the information you can find out about the NASID project as well. So there's a lot of FAQs on there, or there might be some renderings. But that's a good way also to keep up to date for every Friday. So that's something that we just started this past September. So we're going into our second month. Other than that, updates, we did kick off this past Friday, October sixth. Our Habilitat Haunted, I guess it's a haunted drive-through. So that is running through Sunday, October twenty-ninth. It is on Friday, Saturday from seven to eleven, and Sunday from seven to ten PM. So I believe there are still tickets available, it's oahuhauntedhouse.com. It is per vehicle, so it ranges depending on the day, from sixty-five to seventy-five dollars per vehicle. And this is their main fundraiser that Habilitat has put on every year. So this will be their third year with us. So that'll run through the weekends. In addition to that, as Chris mentioned, we do have our Blood Bank of Hawaii Blood Mobile Drive. So they will be on site for the first time on October twenty-second from eight to two PM. It's fronting the box office, we'll have the Blood Mobile there. Everyone that does sign up pre that day will get free admission to the swap meet. And then you'll also be entered to win a gift basket from one of the vendors. So we're kind of compiling everything. So if you are able to donate for a great cause, please feel free to go ahead on their website, which is bbh.org. And then lastly, we will be having a mixed martial arts event. Which will be on Saturday, November fourth, from five PM to ten PM. Their estimated attendance is about a thousand people. We'll be holding that actually in Parking Section Six B. So it's on the inner circles of the stadium. And that's all I have. Uh-oh, they were so excited, did I lose them?
Stand them into silence.
No questions.
Sorry, Bettina.
Chris, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Chris?
Yes, I can hear you.
I can't hear anything going on in the board.
Neither can we.
It's just us.
It's just us, we can hear each other.
What do you really think about this meeting?
Now, now.
Oh, there they are.
You guys all hear us? Since five minutes.
Now. We can read now.
Can everyone online hear us okay?
Yes.
Yes. Fine.
Okay, okay, now that you can hear us, if you could, just for the future, try and keep it to five minutes. We appreciate you guys' report. Yeah, so thank you. Chris, would you be able to detail some time again for the zoning meeting?
I don't have the time, I have the date, but you know what, I'll go ahead and email it to you.
Okay, would you please, thank you.
Yeah, yep, sure.
Okay, board members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Community members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Okay, thank you both for your reports, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bettina, O triple C.
Awesome, thank you, Chair Wood, good evening, members of the board, members of the community. Bettina Maynard from AHL, Lead of the O triple C Design Team. Couple of very quick updates. Governor Green expressed his support for continuing our work to move forward with the procurement. Providing money for the continued work on O triple C. He also provided some support, financial support for the animal quarantine station to move forward with the design of their new facility. Having said that, Governor Green also supports continuing work on the stadium project, as you just heard. He envisioned big, ongoing projects to revitalize the community and support the economy. And that ultimately benefits the entire state of Hawaii. Senate President Ron Cucci also indicated support for all correctional upgrade work. He expressed appreciation to budget and finance, who now supports lease buyback and P3 arrangements for this type of work. And as Chris Kinimaka just mentioned, there was good interest with thoughtful discussion on O triple C at the PBX twenty-three conference on September twenty-seven. Any questions and comments both during and after that presentation? Included support for needing to address the O triple C conditions now. And that planning for the existing O triple C site should be underway sooner rather than later. So all around, good news, and that concludes my update.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for O triple C? Okay, community members, any questions for O triple C? Alright, Bettina, thank you so much for your report.
Of course, thank you.
Pearl Ridge Shopping Center.
Hello, Chair Wood and board members. Updates on some events and stories happening at Pearl Ridge Center. Our Senior Lifestyle and Ohana Fair will be held on Saturday, October fourteenth, and Sunday, October fifteenth, from ten AM to five PM at the Maka Center Court. At the fair, participants will learn about Kapura House Services, Carrying Transitions, Retirement Services, Financial Planning, and more. Kuna Ho Quartet Fundraiser for Maui Relief. High school students from Kuna Ho will perform classic chamber music at a fundraiser for the school's Maui Disaster Relief Fund. This event will be held at Pearl Ridge on Sunday, October twenty-second, from one to two PM in Vai Makai Center Court. The Royal Hawaiian Band, one of our favorites, is coming back to Pearl Ridge Center. Will be performing on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from twelve to twelve forty-five PM at the Maka Center Court. Japan Tourism and Japanese Culture will be on display at Pearl Ridge Center on Sunday, October twenty-ninth, from ten AM to four thirty PM in our Maka Center Court. Get a chance to learn more about the culture, seeing in Japan while enjoying activities, games, live musical entertainment for all ages. So students from the, try to get this right, Ohana, Ohanama Kaise High School in Japan will be at Pearl Ridge for the event and will hold dance performances throughout the day. At three thirty PM that day, the Governor of the Fukushima Prefecture, Maseo Ujibori will be at Pearl Ridge Center to make a brief speech and meet with our community members. Now ironically, I was in Japan when all this event came together. And when I got back, I asked the group, I said, you know, why were you coming to Pearl Ridge to hold this event? And I quote, they said that our community struck them as being a warm, friendly, and family-oriented location to hold this event. So we have several items planned for Halloween, we have the Free Halloween Candy Crawl, again this year, and the Cakey Trickertreaters are invited to wander store to store for free treats on Tuesday, October thirty-first, from five to eight PM. We also have a haunted mansion that will be coming to Pearl Ridge Center from Friday, October thirteenth through October thirty-first. It will be in Vai Makai in the former Inspirations location. It's being put on by the Koop Theater Group. These are local actors, actresses, makeup artists, so this is really going to be a pretty impressive haunted house experience. And then finally, Friday night, Friday night actually, will happen on October twenty-eighth, from six to ten PM in our Vai Makai lower parking lot, and that's in the Sears parking lot area. There will be a stage. And that's in the Sears Parking Lot area. Uh, there will be a stage, a couple of band performances, a D J, Nightmare Bar, and roaming costume characters. Um, uh, the next Pearl Ridge Night Market will be held on Friday, November third, from five to nine P M. At the first level parking lot running T J Maxx. Um, pop-up markets, the Hawaii Sports Cards and Collectible Shows occurs the second weekend of every month. Uh, the next show is October fourteenth and fifteenth, ten A M. to five P M. And again on November eleventh and twelfth at the Vai Makai Center Court. I mentioned Zuma classes last time. Um, there was a board member that asked me about Tai Chi classes at Pearl Ridge Center. I don't see or hear, but if anyone knows of a Tai Chi instructor that's interested in giving classes at Pearl Ridge Center, can you please seek me out? I would love to try to put that together. And um, finally, the Blood Lake of Hawaii Blood Mobile will be at center, at the center on Friday, October thirteenth, from twelve P M. to six P M. in the Maka Parking Lot near our main entrance. Finally, uh, Fuji Japanese Restaurants still under construction. Spirit Halloween is in Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, California Pizza Kitchen moving forward on the renovation. And L A Rose is a local jeweler, opening her first brick and mortar store at Pearl Ridge Center that happened this weekend um, on October fourteenth. And that's a lot of information. Thank you. You can find any, all this on PearlRidgeOnline dot com, Facebook, and on Instagram.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Uh, board members, Jane.
Night Market last Friday was canceled without notice. What happened?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I apologize. I don't know. I was out of town. I don't know what happened with the promoter. I'm not sure if there was an issue with the number of vendors. Um, and that was, that was on us for, for that mission, for that miscommunication. But we will have the one in November.
Uh, board members, any other questions, comments, concerns? Meeting members, any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I'm going next.
Uh, ma'am, can you speak up? Sir? Are you there? Do you have a question or concern? Okay. Okay, um, all right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Hey, uh, hey, David, just one other thing, real quick. Sorry. Um, I just went, I I know that some, some, some folks have mentioned about the increase in security that you guys have been doing, so I appreciate that. Uh, I guess you added some more routes or something. I don't know what you guys have done over there, but it's noticed, so thank you. I know it's a slow, steady, steady slog to work off that list of things that we've talked about, right? So thank you for that. Um, okay, U S Navy Department of Defense, Victor. Okay.
Hi, uh, this is Lydia. I'm dialed in online. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go.
Awesome. Okay, I will cover Red Hill issues first. Uh, the biggest news and uh, most important for a lot of you all is that defueling of Red Hill is going to start on Monday. Uh, you may have seen the Joint Task Force press release that came out yesterday. Um, they've gotten all of the work done. Uh, I think Department of Health approval was happening today, but they are ready to do the gravity defueling starting Monday. They'll be removing about a hundred and four million gallons of fuel. This process will take approximately three months. They have a great dashboard, and if you haven't downloaded their app, uh, you might want to go to the website and check it out. When I'm done here, I'll put the Joint Task Force website in the chat for link, and it should also be in our report. But they do great updates. Um, Joint Task Force and Navy have done a lot of public meetings and provided information in various venues over the last few months, but as always, we welcome your questions. Long-term monitoring continues. That inter-agency effort, uh, we've taken more than seventy-one hundred samples of the water at various locations, at schools, at um, child development centers and at homes, and the water remains safe. Um, the Naval Facilities Organization has a drinking water booth that they have at various venues. And tomorrow, uh, on the eleventh, they're going to have one at the Capalina Night Market from four to eight, and they'll do that again on November eighth. And then on October twelfth, from ten to one at the Pearl City Navy Exchange. Tank closure efforts continue. The planning is ongoing. You can find all of the various reports and the supplements that we've submitted to the regulators on our website, and I will put that link in the notes as well. And finally, all, all of the work that we are doing is in close coordination with the regulators, the Environmental Protection Agency, who I believe follows uh, Navy here, and then also Hawaii Department of Health. So um, again, please let us know of any questions you have. Uh, you probably know about the Community Representation Initiative, but I believe the E P A rep will talk about that. We are posting summary notes from those meetings on our website. That's all I have, so I'll kick it over to Vic and then stand by for questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Lydia. Hi, board, Victor Flit, Naval Facilities. Uh, the Dreams Come True Foundation requests Navy support. Young Jacob Caldwell, he's age eleven. All he wants to do uh, is visit Pearl Harbor. He learned about Pearl Harbor in school and on T V. And Navy along with the National Park Service is arranging for a visit uh, for Jacob and his family. Uh, U S Arizona Memorial and the Wolfen Submarine and and a Navy destroyer are gonna be there for him and the family to go in and check out. Also, Jacob and his family is gonna dine with the sailors at our dining facility on Pearl called the Silver Dolphin. Maybe we'll ensure that um, young Jacob's dreams come true. Our Kupuna team, September twenty-first, the U S Navy Kupuna Team met with Admiral Barnett and his staff. Admiral Barnett is the Navy Region Commander, and he's gonna be responsible for Red Hill remediation after the defueld. So the Kupuna met with him and the staff to share their manao on that. Cash traffic, Maui fire, the Navy is still assisting with the Maui recovery and relief efforts. Uh, this is in coordination with the state and federal agencies. The Federal Fire Department has been responding to and assisting Honolulu Fire, numerous Wildland Fire Fu- at Wildland Fires, Central Oahu, and on the Leeward Coast. And speaking of Fed Fire, last month, uh, Fed Fire graduated thirty new recruits. Twenty-six of them were Fed Fire, four for airport state crash. All firefighters went through and accredited twenty-six week recruitment program. That's all I have. Are there any questions for Lydia or myself? Danny? And Black Hole Hooli was the third, but he dropped out because he was getting a lot of pushback. What they talked about and shared was um, the land remediation, and what they would hope to see happen to Red Hill after the defueld. And we also shared with the Kupuna that there was a recent survey by a group that the Navy hired called Na Kupuna. Na Kupuna doesn't mean anything about Kupuna. That's the guy's name, Warren Na Kupuna. That's his company. Anyway, uh, questions were asked of the general public, uh, what they would like, and a survey was done, and reports were given back what they would like, and there's all, fills the gamut, from blow it up, fill it up, uh, or use it for storage and stuff like that. What the Kupunas wanted to focus on is would the facility be able to hold water if, if, uh, if the tanks could be cleaned? This wouldn't be drinking water. This would be water for emergency purposes, something similar that happened out on Maui. That would be water for fire hydrants, industrial use, and irrigation. And that water would be available without electricity. It would be gravity fed. So yes, it could be held for that purpose, but it's not saying that that's what is gonna happen. It's up to the command and the survey, whatever the outcome is. But they shared their manao on that. And some other stories about um, the land and family background, stuff like that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, so does that mean, just to be clear, does that mean that closure is now off the table? There, there, the tanks are not gonna be made unusable as was promised earlier. They're gonna be filled with water. But originally, the, the, the conversation about closure was that they would be made completely useless. But if they're gonna put it with water, they can also be filled with.
That was only their manao, Danielle. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen. So we wanted to hear what their opinions were with their manao. It's, that was the extent of it. We heard everything from prison to animal storage to everything. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen. So the top things that were voted on, as a matter of fact, they came here to this meeting to talk about that. Yeah, yeah. So the, the ones that rated the highest are gonna be reviewed by the command, by E P A. They have that Community Advisory Board now. And whatever they decide, decide. I mean, you know, but they shared their manao and what they would like to see, some past history. And um, could the tanks be used for water? Yeah. For industrial purposes. So where, if we needed it, for hydrants, stuff like that, it could be available. That's all.
Now, the Navy's position that it closure, to make the tanks unusable is off. It, it could be used, it could be.
Hmm, oh, okay. I don't wanna go there because I'm Public Works. I'm not at that level. I'm at a very low level. But it's up to the command what they wanna do. It's up to E P A and Department of Health. They are our regulators. They dictate what we will do. And that's part of the discussion is what the uh, the survey says. Lydia, do you have any, any thing with that one?
I was gonna, I was gonna jump in. I couldn't hear all the question, but the tanks, the, the tanks are gonna be closed. The Department of Defense has said that. They're not gonna put fuel or any other hazardous material up there, so that, that is done. Now, there are three different efforts that are looking at potential beneficial non-fuel reuse. The one you all heard about was done by the Na Kupuna Company, and they have been doing those surveys, and they've been posting those results online. That information is going to go with, um, Office of Naval Research had a contract with the University of Hawaii to look at all sorts of potential reuse. That is gonna be fed into a bigger report that goes to Congress because um, the National Defense Authorization Act, the N D A A, had a requirement to look at potential reuse. So all of this information is being um, put together, but that is, that is separate from, if you will, than the actual closure work that the Navy is doing and all those plans that they have. So hopefully that makes sense. Closure is going to happen as far as, and that part of that is about ten miles of pipeline is gonna be removed between the tank farm and down to the underground pump house. So the lowered pump house. So that closure is happening. What happens after that? There are a lot of command organizations and Congress is looking at it too. So there will be a look at um, what would be used for, what could be some other effects or impacts. So still a lot of work to be done. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thanks, Lydia. Danny, are you good?
No.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, all right, all right. Um, I think I know where you're going with this, right? Which is, you don't wanna see them being repurposed for fuel use. I don't think your concern necessarily is like if they're repurposed for some other use. It's more about fuel.
I understand with the same thing that Ernie Mall has said from the beginning. If they're not made completely unusable, who's to say we don't go to war? And then they are repurposed for, for fuel again. That's my main concern, because originally, the conversation was closure and decommission. And the definition of decommission is to make it unusable. Literally, or something so that it cannot be repurposed and, and used in the same way that was previous. But because of the way the government in the United States works, like we can go from one administration to the next, or we can go into a more time. And it could be used for water, it could be used for something else, and then drained and reused for fuel. And we don't prevent that from happening physically. Who's to say another administration ten years down the line will be.
But Lydia did say that they were moving like ten miles of pipe from.
Correct. And, and the plan that's been approved, that's been submitted, right, and the plan that's been submitted said to render it unusable to, to store fuel. So without the pipelines, and uh, there'll be other efforts that'll be made to make it un- unusable for storing fuel or other hazardous material. That, that is what Department of Defense has done.
Also, Congress put that out. Can't do our own thing. Can never, ever, ever be used for fuel again. Well, I don't know about that, but, but I get what you're saying there. Not kind of crazy. Okay, uh, community members, any questions for Navy? Sir, you had one earlier, so why don't you put that as far as all the pipeline and the pipeline pressure testing, and then trying to ask the authorities in the view, there's a lot of articles about the Navy's air sensors. Or air monitors? Air monitors. Would you check in? Lydia, air monitors. In here.
I just had to unmute myself. Uh, so yes, you saw the air quality monitoring effort. What the Navy is doing is they took some lessons learned from what happened during Red Hill. They're looking at the best way to get a baseline right now of what's happening in the joint base area. They have about, I believe it's fifty-two monitors, some in general joint base property areas, and some around Red Hill. And we're talking with the regulators about the benefit that they could, this could uh, provide. So it will collect data for approximately six months, and then a report will be made available after that, and we'll be sharing this again with the regulators. But the key right now is to, uh, is for a baseline. This has to do with if there was a spill or something else in that hap- that happened in the environment, like a, a waterway or on the ground. Uh, this has nothing to do with drinking water. This is about a different type of environmental exposure. So that's what these different testing stations will be, and we're, we're putting together some information to send out to the community to provide more details. I could not hear that question.
Can you speak up, sir, please? Oh, they can't hear you.
About the, the pipeline from Red Hill to Pearl Harbor, was that pipeline pressure tested?
Lydia, was the.
The joint task that with the pipeline pressure testing. So what the Joint Task Force has done is they did an unpacking of all the fuel lines. They did repairs, then they repacked, and part of that is the pressure testing. I'm not an engineer, so I don't have specifics on that, but what I will look for is some information that they may have provided on their website, and we can send that to the board, and if I can find it while this meeting is happening, I'll put it in the chat as well. But I can also take your question, uh, because you wanna know specifically if they were pressure tested.
Yeah, hey, Lydia, just, just, um, go ahead and bring that to the next court meeting. Sir, I need you to wrap it up, like, because we got it online.
A pipeline is underground, the water pipe knows air monitor detected leak. The pipe has been leaking underground, so we don't know if it's five gallons of leakage or five hundred gallons that reaches the surface. But it's all this period as far as the air monitor, what's the purpose? Because if the Navy field, the pipe integrity is not as optimal, and they're waiting for it to leak, just like they're on the testing, by the time it leaks, certainly a substantial problem.
They, they have done pressure testing on, on all of those elements that are gonna be part of the defueling. And those lines that you're talking about are in a tunnel underground, so those are visible. They have rovers walking through. They have various watches that are going and, and looking at these pipelines the entire time that they're doing the work there. So when you say underground, it's not like they're buried. They're in an open tunnel that allows you to, to view those pipelines.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, there's a question online.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Shimizu, you have a question? Okay, no question, then.
I don't have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, what? Okay, okay. All right, uh, okay. Thank you both for your time. Appreciate it. Hey, EPA. Hey, nothing heard. Hey, uh, State Department of Transportation.
Uh, good evening, Chair. Um, I do not have any report to report tonight, uh, but I can take any questions or concern about the state highways. I can't hear you.
Hey, Casey, sorry about that. You cut out. Do you mind, uh, starting from the beginning? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything to report, but I can take any concerns about state highways or questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions, comments? Hey, uh, community members up there, everybody? Okay, thank you. Oh, please, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, you know, they, Casey, I don't know, they've been working on taking out the oleanders up to IA far. And then replacing them with more concrete, because I was told that it was because it was too hard to maintain the oleander. Um, and now we've got little weeds coming up from the bottom of the concrete. And on top of that, it doesn't say much to have more concrete instead of weed. Help with our replenishment of our water and our green and our environment. Now, are there any plans to go further beyond what's been done into the IA area towards Crow Ridge? We don't like it.
Okay, so, so your concern is, um, that the, filling the, the median area part of the highway, um, with concrete?
They have created it.
Right, that's, um, okay, and then the weeds are growing from the sides of the, uh, using the cracks of the concrete and the retaining wall?
Actually, I don't really care about the weeds. I care about whether you hope to go any further into IA, um, can they have a highway and take out any more green?
Okay, so, so what area again, um, you're talking about?
Away from Tripler to right, to right, our off-ramp to IA, from IA to IA.
Oh, from Tripler, over Monaloo Freeway, you're talking about then? Okay, in the median area. Okay, I can go check on that.
Anything else, sir? All right. Okay, uh, thank you for, uh, for that. It's Robbie. Okay, uh, we'll move on to board business. We have Makalapa Neighborhood Park Restoration. This one's near and dear to my heart.
I'm on a hotspot. I, I think it's my laptop. I don't think it's the internet, to be honest. Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry about that.
Open it and I'll take it.
All right, I don't have anything to play.
Okay, you have it, um, link, I just was thinking how to use it.
I can do it, Lindsay.
Okay, um. I think I'm starting. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, hi, I'm Olivia Pobasian. I'm with Trees for Honolulu's Future, and I'll be co-presenting with National Parks and Forests and Landowners on, um, community effort around Makalapa Neighborhood Park. So in spring of 20, uh, 2022, um, we received an environmental justice grant from the EPA to work with youth specifically around the issue of urban heat islands and areas that were disproportionately affected by heat and had low canopy cover. And we, uh, worked with two sites. One was IA Intermediate School, and the other was, um, Parents and Children Together at the Pu Bu Momi Housing. And so their, the site is adjacent to the Makalapa Neighborhood Park. Um, and so the, um, uh, the components of this project was, um, getting the kids out, investigating their environment, specifically around heat and trees. Um, and so they, um, did inventory of the trees on their campus or their park, um, identifying the species, mapping them, measuring the canopy, the diameter, um, and then putting them into the citizen forestry database. Um, and then they also did, uh, investigation of the temperature. So they went out with infrared thermometers and measured the temperature of different surfaces in the parks, like the parking lot, the basketball court, the fields in the shade in the full sun. And of course, it's like very intuitive. It's going to be much hotter in the parking lot than under a tree, but it's still powerful for them to see and quantify, um, the impact of how different surfaces heat up at different rates. And so, uh, they made a heat map of that. And then the next most important part of the project was that the youth, um, get the opportunity to really feel like their, um, uh, input and, and perspectives are valued and, uh, and for them to gain new skills, um, navigating the systems for, um, making changes and getting to engage with, uh, decision makers and stakeholders. So, uh, so for the, um, IA Intermediate School, that looked like them presenting to their, um, district arborist and to their principal, they had made a recommended planting plan, um, for their campus. And it got approved, and they ended up planting 20 native trees and shrubs at IA Intermediate School in the spring. Um, and then, um, for Makalapa Community Park, what they decided to do was make a, a video, telling their story of what it's been like in their park from their perspective. So we're just gonna, yeah, give ahead, yeah.
Yeah.
Any more, I'll play the video.
We thought we would play the video because it, it tells a lot of the story, but I guess real quick before we do it, so we're with, so we had the two kind of programs going on. One was focused on heat islands and environmental justice. And then we also were coming in, working with PACT, um, and, um, council member Cordero's office on revitalizing the park and bringing light to the park. So you're going to see both of those things. You're going to see information on the, on, um, heat islands and all of that. And, and then we're also at the same time working on making the park, um, improving the park and making, getting the community voices, um, out on how to improve it and then how to really do that longer term. So we thought the video, because it's six minutes, we could show that. And then we have, um, we're starting a, um, we're gonna, there's going to be a, a, a community meeting in November. And, um, the, the council member's going to put on the week of November 13th. And then we're also trying to recruit people for a friends group. So I will stop talking so we can show the video, but I think I need to show you what slide it is on. Go down. Go in. Sorry, we're trying to show a little bit about what both of the programs, but, uh, yeah.
Go back.
Go back up where it says, one more there.
Right there. What do you think?
That is a comment. Yep, yep. To go there. And then Noah will say it much more eloquently and.
Okay.
My name is Noah. I have ten years old and I'm in the. This is Makalapa Community Park. It's located in IA and it's to Pu Bu Momi House, which is where we live. My friends and I plant the park every day. Unfortunately, there is a lot of problems with the park. First of all, the park is extremely hot because there is barely any. There is no, so people get really thirsty. There are risks of bee hantation and people eating apples. I used to play playground, but it was taken down, so it has not been replaced. This makes the park a very fun. He moved playground. Now it's often, but there's always. There's a basketball court, a lot of these, you know, basketball head, volleyball head, no, it's a ball. The park pavement is rough and. In the park, there is only one trash can, and there is lots of litter around the park that's been thrown away. And it's dangerous because there is a lot of broken glass, so it's risky. Once the sun goes down, it's very turny because the lights are broken. There are also people who are afraid of the dark, and it can be dangerous not being able to see. There used to be a bathroom, but it was also taken down. That's a problem because people need to use the bathroom, but there is nowhere to go. There's no benches to sit on in the park. We get tired and want to rest after playing basketball. And the park is too hot to sit on. During the rest, you're waking, moving on about the park during the night. We learn that we can fix trees and find, that the trees are tree, the board measures the lights. Trees give us shade, oxygen, and calm the shadows. We get what some trees help us build our homes, and painting the things, like paper, furniture, usable matches. These people are the accident, and it's the humans popping the accident, it's stuck in our atmosphere, causing the burning to get warmer. We have done a slide, measured and mapped the trees around the park into our tree inventory. There are six trees in the park, one monkey paw, three deer paw, and seven women. The city and county of Honolulu wants the urban canopy to be on the city floor. Really, Makalapa Park, we have zero percent. Will you guys meet the temperatures of different services around the park and which areas are the hottest and coolest? Pavement, rock, and sand heal faster than grass and water. Funnest parts of our park is the basketball court and where the playground is to be. The coolest parts of our park are places that do the chase. Here are recommendations for improving the park. We can plant trees to provide shade and cool down the hottest parts of the park, especially around the basketball. You could also plant fruit trees close to the houses to help provide food for the community. Another recommendation for improving the park is adding a drinking fountain and park benches in the shade so it's easier for people to spend time in the park when it's fall. We also want to fix the basketball court and nets and a playground so it's more fun for kids to play. We could also have the lights repaired and more garbage cans added, so the park is safer. Finally, we want to replace the bathroom so the park is cleaner and more convenient. And we can have events in the park. I think if we can make these changes, Makalapa Park would be a healthier, safer, and more fun place to play. And it would be a really great place to relax and spend time with friends and family. I would also like to create a community service team to help take care of the park and the new pools. I think we could work together to make a journey in Makalapa Park. Thank you for listening. Mahalo, piso, and thank you.
It's a fact of the. You've got enough.
All right, first back over you. Great video, by the way.
Yeah, great video. Great, um, so a, after Noah did that, he also did present to, um, the Parks and Rec Committee, um, at City Council. And, um, and we also met, we've been, um, this month been trying to, uh, or I guess over the, the last month and a half, we've been trying to get the word out a little bit about his video, but also about the work that's been going on. And we have seen some, some results, and we've gotten some good advice. One of, one of which is, um, after we, we met with the director of Parks and Rec, the lights did come back on. So, um, it was found out that, that they were not in fact broken, um, but there were some things that needed to be done. And so now that those are coming on and, and there's some more trash cans and there are some, um, some improvements that are in the works. But one of the things that we really learned, uh, from talking to other people is a real need to, um, to not just do something and then go away, but to have it be a community effort and have there be, um, really what we're looking at is a Friends of Makalapa Neighborhood. So we're, um, in the process of, um, I've got some flyers and, um, Akki, uh, Jeffrey Swabro over here is going to be, is working with me. Um, and we're going to try and stand up a friends group and really, um, address the issues that have been happening at the park, bring the community together. Um, we're looking at some short-term improvements while, um, that are needed kind of immediately, and we're kind of calling those quick builds. But things that the community can do, things like fixing the basketball field, adding trees, maybe a community garden, maybe a pathway, some art, just different things that we can, that, uh, Parks and Rec has been amenable to, saying that we can do these kinds of things, but we do need the community's support and we need to see that the community is going to be participating. So, um, yeah.
And, um, yeah, thanks for, um, having us. From some, when you look at Makalapa, anywhere it's situated right now as we speak, it, it is a little park. There's not as much access as would like, the parking. But if you consider all the things that are going to be happening in the future, and this is a public park we're talking about, that we all own. And then you look at other maps about all the development that's happening around the ones that are not colored by the residents. And so I consider all of you residents who still are right here and have a say. All that future stuff is down the road, and so that's why we're trying to reach out to find these people, especially the ones that are chasing. And, and here that, and help us plan for this really, um, develop, it's going to be a big develop, going to be a lot of changes. But that's for us to rally as a community to take this and envision it because access issues have changed because of the rail. Now people can see it from the rail, can see what that is. Who knows what we can't, and we don't certainly. So trying to get this, that friends group, we'd like to think we're, um, moving at the trust of, of, at the speed of trust with the communities. We need to, uh, get you.
We are, we're actively recruiting.
Yes.
And we have some flyers and there, um, we should have a, there should be a meeting in November as well. If anyone has advice on how to reach more people, um, we, we canvass the neighborhood and things like that, but, um, if there's any other advice. And we are looking at, um, also safe routes to the park and then also to schools around. So that is another effort that we're working with the city, um, DTS Safe Routes to School program on as well. If anyone is interested in, in helping to get, um, the, the busing and, I mean, it, it had been a little bit difficult getting kids to school. So we're also looking at improving access in the ground. So, um, and yeah, so the week of November 13th will be.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions? Or I start in?
I have a question.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Didn't you, we had a person come from Palawa Apartments. Didn't you give him some questions about contacting this part? To coordinate something with this, yeah, to reach out to this part?
Did I?
Yeah, last, last week.
Yeah.
Yeah. The zoning, yeah. They came out. That guy that came to talk.
Yeah.
You reached out to him.
I did?
Yeah. If I look into the.
Um, yeah. Okay, I'll look in a minute.
Yeah, and you guys can coordinate with each other. Yeah, and you guys can coordinate with each other. Because I think they can help you a lot because they have access to your park. Maybe you can coordinate together and that would be good for the community. Because they're building new apartments there. That would be a good idea.
Oh, now I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lynn. All right, now I got it. Yes, yes. I'll put you in contact with them.
Thank you.
So, I did not do that. Just let me write that down.
Sherwood.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. The flyer that you have, do you have a digital copy that can be emailed to the board?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, one of the questions I asked them last month was like if they wanted to sponsor the park. Because they have to provide a certain amount of...
Yes.
Yeah, and could they actually, rather than incorporate it on their lot of, you know, their land, if they could sponsor a park or something like that?
Yeah, we did, we did also meet with TOD and planning and that was something that was brought up, that maybe some of that can bring, but then could put in money towards it. But then there's so much redevelopment going around.
Well, that's the redevelopment right there is that, because they have plenty of apartments coming up.
Yeah.
And they would be a good sponsor.
Yes.
So look into that.
I'll put you in contact with them.
Okay.
So what are the concerns, you know, about, one, I'm sorry, don't hit the Wednesday ones. It literally smacks in my meeting with the J2 and the J6 out in Opakamau. So like, I can't skip that. But what I would prefer though, as what's been going on, since you guys may be updated what's going on, right? So, so I, thank you. If we can't change the Wednesday dates, then...
Yes.
Then...
We will, we'll find a date, especially for the Friends group that works.
That might be a better, yeah. Um, my concern is, and my concern toward Halaava in general is, there's a lot of vandalism, right? And hence the reason why the bathrooms were moved out there, hence the reason why the playground equipment moved out of there. You know, nets, you know? How do you guys plan on combating that? Because I mean, you put all this money into it and then just they vandalize the heck out of it, right? So, for a tip, okay, let's say, we had, we had one of the condo units over by Halaava Apartments. The kids were lighting fires next to it and like doing all kinds of crazy stuff and jumping in their pools and like. And so we actually went to the public housing director and met with him and gave him a description of the kids. And that stopped that. Because he went to the parents and told the parents what the kids were doing, the parents got involved. So I think the parents there, as long as they know, like they will do something now. So, so I don't know if there, have you guys met with that? The project manager or the director over there for the public housing area?
We've been, there's been, there was turnover and then we've been having a hard time actually being able to get a meeting.
All right, let me, let me set that up for you.
Okay, I'm ready.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I know people have already submitted or admitted, but Ko'olunani has an open grant opportunity that closes soon, on the 15th. So that may be a good thing to pursue or maybe just talk to them, Heather McMillan, if there are grant opportunities. Kind of plan the replanting.
How many children is in your program? Do you have children in your program?
I mean, I'd say, I mean, packed as an after-school program and a summer program and it's a drop-in thing. So I have to ask them for the exact numbers because like I went there once a week for about a year. And it was like a different room every single time I went. But, but yeah, I've worked with like 40 or 50 kids probably, and but there's probably way more there.
Can you give, does he have your contact number? I'd like to have your contact number after.
Oh, I can, I can give you.
I'll give you a call after.
Okay.
Okay.
And yeah, I guess, I mean, vandalism is like the, the concern that definitely keeps coming up. And I think that having a community group is really important to try and address any unresolved history around it and conflict that have, that have, that came before or that might come up. And, but I also think some like incremental improvements to the park are going to help just get more intergenerational engagement in the park. Like having shade in the park is going to bring more people there and you get more adult stuff. Because right now it's mostly kids that play there. But I don't, I also feel like it's not good if you're worried about teenagers vandalizing the park. You know, you're kind of punishing the little kids and they're, you know, I think if you want them to take pride in their park, taking everything out of it isn't really an effective solution. Because they just seem like it's stripped down to nothing, but they're still there every single day. And so that's why I thought it was important for their voices to be heard from the back perspective. But I think the big thing is to just get like the community involved, to make the park more pleasant to be in so you can get more people involved and have...
So when you guys reviewed the park, did you notice any like, like, I guess runoff? Or things that were like causing like soil? The fence line, you can see it, right, where it's got exposed concrete bases and things like that? Because there's erosion happening. Is that due to the fact that there's no trees on the, on the property or do you guys think that's something else? I mean, the reason why I'm asking this question is because we have had a historical, ever since I've been on this board, we've had homeowners that are along that fence line complaining about flooding.
Yeah.
And, and erosion, when I go there, you know, I literally dug down into there about three feet down and went and got to the point to where there's concrete, where the drainage ditch was at. But that was filled up with sediment up to that point, sediment that came from the park. And so, so one of the things that, you know, previous administrations have had come out and take a look at is like erosion issue. I just wondered if you guys noticed that while you guys were taking a tour of the place or anything like that?
Yeah, I think we've all definitely noticed it and we brought it up and it's, yeah. But I think it's something we can keep, we can continue to look at and try to address.
Yeah, at this point, the city is like, that drainage ditch is not government, like city owned. And it's up to the homeowners along that drainage ditch to keep it clean and clear. My argument is, is if somebody's throwing dirt into your drainage ditch, whose responsibility is it to clean that dirt? You know, should, you know, the person who's throwing the dirt in it should be cleaning it, their house. But I think the tree idea and, you know, having trees and things like that reduces erosion, we know this. So that might be, might be a good solution to this problem.
Yeah, we, I, can I add, like, this is a process. We've been looking at this for a while and we don't have all the answers. Part of the process is, we have all these issues and finding what is, but we've come to a point where a Friends group seems to be a really good idea on how to, because there is a lot of residential knowledge that we don't know that these residents know and, you know, we won't know unless people participate. So that's really, you know, cry for help to help us make the right decisions and be transparent.
Just asking, okay? How would you contact a resident in that area that had issues or, you know, or would like to participate?
Yeah.
Myself included, by the way. So, but yeah, just, just reach out to me.
And one other thing that I just wanted to mention is we should, it's looking like 99% that it will happen. But one of the UH design schools or design classes for the landscape architecture program is going to do a studio class in the spring. So, and it is about land movement or land topography and planting. So I think that is something that they can also...
Cummins? Hey, all right, Claire.
Before I have to say, well, you have to look.
Yeah. Was he asking for a waiver? Yeah, okay, all right.
Second thing is, don't get in there. They had a bathroom.
Yeah, I remember they had a bathroom too, yeah.
I did one. The older adults, the old gang guys have their own set of rules. Don't adhere to any of what even what the old gang guys say. Not attacking people at bus stops and mobbing them, not drinking in the park. I mean, they don't want activity in the park because they use it at night to drink, hang out, break glass, that type of stuff. So although I'm sympathetic for that, till you can hold that, I mean, these will not even go in. Call the police, they'll take, they'll take their time because they don't feel safe not to go in. So I think, I have a feeling, Makalapa and some key people in there will be able to pull other... The names on the old guy and, or how do they even know this? Because the people that live in Kauai will be, are long-term, they can't transition. Supposed to be there, get your leg up and then move out. Most of the people that live there, some turn, but, so I guess we could have mentioned something there. So maybe we can all have some conversation. But you really need to have the eyes on that park, you know, that live there. Because no matter what you do, maybe they, there's an element in that housing area that does not want them.
Okay, all right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Navy, dry dock number three replacements, I'm so excited about.
Yeah, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, a very tough act to follow, so thank you for that. Captain C. Patty here, I'm the planning officer with a recently commissioned field office that the Navy has established to oversee major construction at Pearl Harbor Naval Shipyard. With me is our prime contractor for dry dock five construction, which is included in this CIOP program that we're constructing, Matt Liu. And he's with a joint venture of Hawaiian dredging, Dragados, and Orion. With construction now underway, we're here just to provide general awareness to the community on the scale of the importance of the project. We have extensively studied the potential impacts that the project may have in an approved environmental impact statement. This has been accounted for during the planning and the design stages of the project. We anticipate overall positive effects. Nevertheless, we do want to provide the adjacent neighborhoods with the opportunity to hear from, from the project team directly and ask any questions. So I'll start here, looks like we lost our presentation here, but that's just fine. I'll start here just to, just to represent the Navy and the Naval Shipyard as the requirements owner and provide a basic overview, basically the five Ws on the project. First of all, the why, the bottom line here is that the shipyard has reached the very end of its, of the useful service life for Dry Dock Three, which is one of its four dry docks needed to meet the minimum maintenance requirements for the attack submarine maintenance cycle. Dry Dock Three, the existing Dry Dock Three barely met the dimensional requirements for the older class of submarines that are now being replaced by the newer Virginia-class subs. It doesn't come close to meeting the dimensional requirements that Virginia-class subs. Providing the shipyard workforce with the infrastructure that they need in order to provide timely maintenance is critical to ensuring forward presence of our attack submarines, which directly ensures a free and open Pacific and actively deters aggression from adversaries that would otherwise seek to disrupt economic and political order in their favor. So the alternative that posed the least operational and environmental impact with the best level of constructability was clearly to build a new graving dry dock, which is something we don't do often. The last graving dry dock that we built was about 18 years ago. The new graving dry dock that we're building is going to include all required facilities to make it completely usable, including pump houses, chilled water systems, all the services needed at the dry dock that the dry dock or that the shipyard workforce are going to need to utilize. This includes substations, even includes a new power substation being provided by HECO in conjunction with this effort. Something noteworthy on that is that it's actually completely fully funded by the Navy Milcom project, completely on Navy property, so zero impact to ratepayers. The project also funds and includes environmental mitigations for any impacts that it has to offset. One of the key mitigations that I'd like to highlight is the restoration of the Loco Paila fish pond over at Magru Point that we're partnering with the Data Hawaiian Organization on. When, construction underway now and continuing through September of 2027. That's the required completion date for the project. The project is located on the west end of the shipyard on Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. It does include some outlying areas from the base proper and the shipyard proper. Matt's going to talk extensively about that. The who here, so again, my command, which we stood up to provide a robust level of service to make sure that we succeed, we're a component of NAFAC. And along with DHO, our joint venture, we're accountable for delivering the project, I would say across five dimensions of success, schedule, cost, safety, quality, and ethics. We are partnering extensively in order to do that, partner extensively with industry, labor, regulators, and the community in order to be able to do that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt to talk a little bit more about logistics on the surrounding area.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm Matthew Liu with Hawaiian dredging construction company. Here representing not only just Hawaiian dredging, but the DHO joint venture that we've wanted to work with the Navy, contracted to be excited to build the dry dock five. So as Captain had mentioned, the main project is on Main Base Pearl Harbor. It's a brand new graving dock and basically, you guys probably won't see much, might see a couple of cranes out there in the ocean. You can see something, something now, but it's going to be out there at, within Joint Base Pearl Harbor. So on this surround base, it's a little difficult to see. One of the main staging areas we'll be utilizing is going to be the Navy's facility, land facility over at Waipia Peninsula. So that's going to be a main staging area for a lot of materials because Main Base is only so big. It's going to be affecting this community here primarily is going to be offsite parking. So our offsite parking right now, starting next week, Monday, is going to be a section of Aloha Stadium. So we partnered Aloha Stadium to get some offsite parking there for the interim. And then more for the long-term goal of the project, the offsite park will be just across the street at Richardson Field, which is right next to the entrance to Port Island, right above Rainbow Bay Marina. So there'll be offsite parking for the crews, the craft labor supporting of this project, with limited space on joint base, and we'll have shuttle buses going from the parking spaces off-base on-to-base. So there'll be a little bit more traffic there, but it's going to be limited to those areas for this community. So in general, for this community, you're not going to see a whole lot of impact from this project as a whole. But we just want to give you guys awareness that we are going to be embarking on this momentous project for the Navy and to build a brand new graving dock to support their fleet and also the hundreds of workers that work in the shipyard in the local state, so.
Yes, so just on that point, it is actually the Navy's largest construction award to date. So it's our largest project ever. To build this is going to require, for example, 250,000 cubic yards of concrete. So that's, that's about the same amount of concrete it would take to build the Washington Monument and the surrounding grounds, if you're familiar with the DC area. There's enough utilities to actually almost circumnavigate the whole island of Lahu. The scale is just tremendous, right? And when I talked about impacts being, you know, overall positive, it's overall positive economic impacts. During construction, we expect it to support about 2,500 jobs as we continue on this effort. So at this stage, really just want to hear what questions and concerns are on the community's mind and glad to answer any.
Well, okay, thank you guys for coming, much appreciated. Yeah, I'd heard about this because my daughter actually does sailing lessons down there at Rainbow Bay Marina. And so I was talking with some of the sailors down there and also over at, over the unfit contact league commanders bar area, the senior chief over there mentioned this as well. And so, so when I heard about it, I heard there was 2,500, they actually told me 3,000 jobs. And so, so when I heard about it, I heard there was twenty-five hundred, they actually told me three thousand jobs, but twenty-five hundred is still up there. I wanted to bring you guys in so we could have a little discussion about that because twenty-five hundred jobs for this community is massive. It's an absolute massive undertaking. I appreciate you guys going to have to answer our questions. I'll leave it for the board to open if you guys have anything.
Please go to crew.
And then I'll go.
Traffic alone, it will increase traffic on Camia Mia. For the parking.
Yeah, so, so traffic was included in the environmental impacts statement, extensive traffic studies were done. And, and no, we don't anticipate that this is going to actually add any significant amount of traffic to Cam Highway.
Because in the morning, in the morning, there's traffic.
No, there is, right? And the reason why we don't expect it to be additional traffic necessarily is because of the park and ride. Logistics that, that DHO has set up here with the stadium here. So that being proximate to the, the, the new Skyline Station. It, and, and DHO providing basically transportation for the last mile to the worksite. We think that's going to help encourage ridership on Skyline for anybody that are coming from points west. While at the same time, of course, providing the, the ability for folks who aren't taking Skyline to park there, park and ride.
I heard that you guys were providing, or I don't know if this turned up, but I heard that you guys were providing all the cards to the workers. To utilize the, the, the Skyline or as possible.
So, yeah, so I, I think you're referring to on the Navy side or the shipyard workforce side, right? Yeah, so, so that, yeah, on, on, on. If you're a government employee, military, or civilian, you know, there, there is a program to get, to get a card here, yeah, but.
Would these workers be eligible for that program as well, too, or no?
No, that's not the government, but I'll let DHO talk.
From the DHO, our side is the contractor. That is something we're strongly considering because. Anything that's going to be beneficial for our workers to get there timely, to be, to meet the schedules, is going to be beneficial for everybody and, you know. I live here, I lived here. Pretty much all my life, except for going away for school and whatnot, but. Traffic's not getting better, right? So anything we can do to reduce the traffic, and if I was living west and had to come to base, I mean, obviously. Not having to sit in traffic and just be stuck in it is definitely plus.
Well, one of the things that, that, you know, the airport is not coming online until twenty twenty-five, mid twenty twenty-five, right, John? And so, and so this I see as. It's a driver for people to utilize the Skyline. So whatever way you guys can figure out your workers to get on there and get using it, it'd be beneficial. Not only will it reduce our traffic on Cam. But it will increase the ridership of the Skyline, which is something we want to happen. I see it as a win-win for everybody. Maybe not for you.
No, so, well, same for myself and our senior leadership team from DHO. We are looking into this seriously as far as considering what can we do to utilize the Skyline. And it falls in line with the same thing that the Navy's doing on their end, because it is beneficial. We're seeing the benefits, we're hearing the benefits from those. Civilians that are using it currently, so it does make a lot of sense.
Okay, looking good. Any other questions? Danny?
At the last board meeting, board member Artaki brought up a concern about the wastewater treatment plant. And the ongoing, just like, concern about that in addition to the spill that happened this week. So my question is, how much money is being spent on this project? As opposed to revenue and fixing this, that is like continuing to spill raw sewage into the area?
So, yeah, so I, I don't represent at all the wastewater treatment plan. I don't know, Victor, you want to talk about that?
Working on the wastewater treatment upgrade. Money is for the plant upgrade has been rewarded. And we're talking two totally separate things, those guys. So it's about time we updating that down plan because we've had problems. So we're working those problems, we're working those issues, it's going to take some time. But in the meantime, we're in the process of modernizing it now. All that is a process, it's funded, it's happening now.
Can we, can we table that? Maybe we can have Vic come back with some answers next month on that. Okay, Jane?
Is noise going to be a concern for this?
So, so not for this community here, right? So we, again, included in the EIS were the noise studies. So we looked at potential sensitive receptors. Took an understanding of, of how DHO is going to employ various means and methods of dampening noise at the source. So when we look at that, we look at the noise control plan, we look at the acoustic modeling that we've done. I'd say bottom line upfront is, is that from a noise safety standpoint, there, there are no sensitive receptors within that cone. Of, of noise, you know, where safety is an issue. So then the next layer of concern then becomes nuisance, the nuisance threshold. So there was one area that was, that fell it within that, that nuisance zone. On, it was a on-base housing community, the hot, the historic hospital point housing community. So. Even before we awarded the construction, we met with the Joint Base Commander and, and, or actually in our final consultation with EPA around the EIS before the record of decision was signed. Met with the Joint Base Commander, he made the decision to actually relocate those residents out during the duration of construction. And so beyond that, that, there, you know, we, we don't hit the levels where we expect to reach that nuisance. Level, you know, areas like Hickam Elementary, areas like Fort Island. So obviously, noise monitoring is something we're going to continue watching. Have kind of, you know. Sensitivity reaction type measures to, to put in place. As we monitor that noise, but the bottom line is we will not be exceeding the levels that have been approved in the EIS.
Mike?
I'd like to go back and visit traffic again. The Navy already has a problem with traffic in that area. That connecting road between Moana Lewis. Moana Loa Road and Cam Highway, there's a loop that connects there. The right lane, you can get on at a freeway, the left lane goes down to Cam Highway. That backs up usually one, two times a week because of. Security checks going to Fort Island or the security checks at Makalapa Gate. Or, excuse me, Supply Center Gate for commercial vehicles that go into Pearl. Both of those, some, one or the other, sometimes both of them back that up. And I've been stuck on Moana Loa Road just trying to get to Cam Highway. And the other people in the line there are trying to get to the freeway, and that exists right now. And you're going to impact that area significantly. So I think the Navy needs to go back and look at how they address the security access to Fort Island. And the security access to commercial vehicles at Supply Center Gate. Because it's going to become an issue and you guys are just going to make it worse.
Does that? Does that, is, is the, 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 the actual rail, the actual rail construction going on there, especially the Makalapa?
No, that's the Navy. It backs up going to Fort Island some mornings with the security checks. And some mornings, it's the commercial vehicles, they back up trying to get into that area where they inspect the trucks. And it just sits there. I've been caught a lot of times.
All right, got it, Mike.
Respectfully, if, if you look at our park and ride plan, we are not bringing those vehicles through the gates. We are not. We're parking and riding, we're talking about eight busloads. Per day, right?
Adding eight more vehicles.
I think you're talking, excuse me, I think you're people that when they drive to where they're going to park to get your bus. At Richardson Field there, they have to get down to Richardson Field. And the access to get down there is by the Arizona Memorial, which is just right by there where you can go to Fort, uh, the Makalapa Inspection Area. Those are all going to come, confluence the traffic.
Right, so, so I was responding to, about the. About the comment about the security gates. With respect to that queuing area that, that, that occurs over there, right? So that, that was included in the EIS traffic studies, right? So if you, if you take a look at the EIS, again, publicly available.
I've read the EIS.
Okay, so, so I, I encourage the service to take a look at the traffic studies, they're there if you're interested. To, to duck, to delve deeper into some of the details, but if, if, if the request is for the Navy to study it, I, I guess what I'm saying here is that the Navy has studied it.
Okay. Okay, Mike, anything else? Mike, anything else? You're muted, Mike. Okay.
It's going to need a little study because it's already a problem on one or two days a week. So you're just adding more, it's going to be a problem.
So let's, let's say when you guys start, okay, and it is a problem. Is there some way we can go back and take a look at it and try and figure out a different way of handling this issue?
That, that's quite a what-if scenario.
Yeah, I know. Are you guys open and receptive to ideas on how to change it?
One hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Okay, Francie, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
So one of the things, this came up with the O triple C moving to. Lava. With the traffic congestion in the area. One way is to look into scheduling. What are the start time shifts for these positions? And are they more starting before the crack of dawn, before this? Traffic usually starts, or is it right around that same time? Or is it, can it be staggered to have later times in the day? Have you guys looked into that? Was that in your study or is that something you can put into?
From the contractor's side, we recognize. Time from our guys spent sitting and trying to get through these checkpoints, getting to the front base is, is obviously. Time we don't want to be having our guys spend and do that, right? Efficiency of getting guys to from, so obviously, we're trying to align our workstart schedules to. Kind of be off a bit of what the standard Pearl Harbor time, timeframes are. Obviously, in, in joint base, they also have staggered times on joint base, so it's not a, as simple windows, everyone starts at seven o'clock, some people start six, seven. So it, it's, it's kind of a moving target, but for the, the man of this product to meet the product deadline. We do have to enter into multiple shifts, so there will be some shifts on off-peak hours. That's not going to be affecting traffic, right? And now that plays into effect on the, the parking lot there is to support all of our project. You know, between shifts, so there'll be two shifts, three shifts at some points in time. And it just depends on what stage we are at the project. Can we safely perform that work in the night off hours and also not have a noise impact to the community? For that type of work being performed. So there's a, there's a balance there that we're trying to, we're trying to balance. And minimize the time that it takes for our craft labor to get from a parking area to the base. So yes, we are looking at that. And we have been.
So what are your plans for the ship's schedule? Six to six, is it? Six to nine, what is it?
No, so right now for the, the general shift is seven to five thirty. It's basically a ten-hour shift. We're working extended hours trying to maximize the time that our guys are working. Just because of the needs of the project. And with the five thirty end, I've been working in Joint Base Pearl Harbor before, that's, that's off-peak hour to come off base already, so we're, we're going to be. Not at the same peak that most of the shipyard gets out and starts meeting with base. So that's, that's a plus for us. We're not going to have the shift change during that peak hours. Now, early in the morning, we do realize most of the shipyard area, a lot of their employees come in between five thirty and six in the morning, right? So with us starting at seven, our guys aren't going to be trying to come in five, five thirty. We're trying to, trying to offset that hours a bit. They've been on a tail end of when the, the shipyard guys are coming in. So we're trying to miss those, we're not trying to double stack the peak hours of when we're going to be coming in and coming into the area in general. It just doesn't behoove us to do that.
And you're, this is a Monday through Friday thing, or is it going to include weekends?
It's going to include weekends, too. A lot, there'd be a lot of shift, that would be six days a week for, for a lot of the project. Some operations may go seven days a week on, on certain timeframes. Again, all of that's going to depend on the scope of work, what can we do that's not going to impact the community? So.
One of the, one of the questions I have for you folks was that I heard that there might be a barge that you guys might actually implement that will go around Fort Island as service.
I'll, I'll take that, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I knew that was going to come up. So, so, so actually, during the design phase, some early notions for how we would get the workforce here, again, because we were studying the traffic problem. Included, bring the, bring the craft labor and the work, and the contractor workforce onto Fort Island first, clear the security checkpoint. At the head of Ford, at the Fort Island Bridge, let them park at the west end of Fort Island and then ferry across the harbor. When we took a look at this again, as soon as we made award to, a construction award to DHO, I asked them to, I said, take a look at that because. I have concerns about that very thing, about you're going to, if, if we're going to at peak bring upward, you know, up to four hundred vehicles. Onto, you know, onto Fort Island. That, that, see, that queue up I would be concerned about, four hundred additional vehicles. All trying to get onto the, through the Fort Island Bridge at those times. It, it didn't take long for DHO to look at that and say, no, if, if there are other options, we'd like to pursue that. DHO laid out several really good options for the base to take a look at. We facilitated that, that determination and really, it, it, it landed on. The park and ride at this, at the vicinity of the Skyline stop to, to be the, the, the best option there. So, so, yeah, but be, be, because we knew that that was one of the options it was including the EIS, so the community did hear about that. And I know that some people were kind of hoping that meant like the return of ferry service. But, but that's, it never meant that, right? It, it, it just meant that the contractor would have been able to barge their folks across. Of, of course, operate barges anyway for the purpose of construction, but.
I have one more question and then I'll stop. These twenty-five hundred jobs, what are they mainly consisted of? And then how would the people? Obtain those jobs?
Yeah, so, so the, the total job count up to that twenty-five hundred number, that, that includes all the contracted and, and, and government workforce. You know, all, all the additional support that, that's needed on the base, really the kind of the total effort needed, right, to do that, so. Not in any one area, it would include construction, it includes oversight, government oversight, include, you know, additional government coordination, all the folks handling the outages. All the additional labor needed at the shipyard to continue to keep operations, the shipyard going while they're taking on this major construction. So I would just say kind of all of the above is the twenty-five hundred. If you look more closely at construction, like I said, at peak, we're looking at around six hundred. Labor at, at the peak of, of craft labor.
And how would people go about buying purpose construction jobs?
So if you're, you're looking for craft labor construction jobs, you know. Hawaiian dredging, we have a long issue working with local unions here, so we would encourage everyone to sign up with the local unions. Because that's, that's where our craft labor is coming from, carpenters, operators, laborers, you know, the general unions to work with. So I'd encourage, if you're looking for craft labor positions, sign up, become an apprentice, work with our local union trades. That's, the, the jobs will be coming, not, not just for the, this P two oh nine, but for the state of Hawaii. There's a lot of construction planned in the next few years. So there's a lot of opportunities for craft labor. As far as salary staff, engineers, superintendents, schedulers, support staff, we are actively looking. Within our community and abroad for qualified individuals to join our team. I can, I mean, right now, I'm, I'm going through at least two interviews a day personally, and for various positions, so. We are actively looking for salary positions as, as well as craft.
Email you.
Yeah, so for, for right now, we are working on getting a, a, the DHO J joint venture website up. By the meantime, people, if people are looking for the salary positions, you can go to h d c c dot com, which is Hawaiian dredging's website. You can look at the employment tab there, and there will be job postings for the P two oh nine looking for, and even Hawaiian dredging as a whole, we are hiring. For all of our projects around the state, so there's a lot of job opportunities to be, to be had.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Okay, I have one community member, Mr. Mizzou.
Hi there. Can you hear me? I heard you mentioned the IA fish pond at Magru Point. Was there a concern there, or could you review the coordination with that?
You're asking me if there is a concern?
Yeah, did you mention that fish pond that's at Magru Point?
So, yeah, the, the, the fish pond is, is a required mitigation that's covered under the project funding. And we partnered with. We partnered with, we're partnering with a, the cognizant native Hawaiian organizations in order to do restoration work, both natural resource restoration, cultural resource restoration over that fish pond. We're really looking forward to that aspect of the work here. I think this represents a huge leap forward for, you know, leading edge of the DOD, partnering with the native organization, incorporating indigenous knowledge into our, into our, basically our design practice on the government side. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Claire?
Hi. So regarding the transportation thing, I think you should try, find out how many people you have on the west side working. Just bring them to the skyline, work with the city, have them take a bus right from the skyline without parking anywhere else and take it right past to the supply gate. Ask them through security because they're all the guys that are going to go through your shipyard. So you avoid the multiple queuing and whatever, just one stop. Take them to the skyline, take them from Aloha Stadium and they go to the supply gate between Arizona Memorial and Makalapiti. There's a gate in that will take you to the shipyard. That would, I did facilitate a lot of the congestion. But regarding the local, local, I, um, okay, I, you participate in the meetings?
I do, yes.
There is IAF Community Association.
Okay.
So I didn't at those meetings. Not consistent. Because they usually happen in times that make the Washington DC guys. There are millions of dollars being spent on this project. And yes, although the mitigation and helping out the surging of the fish pond is an important component to it, a lot of the money, a portion of a lot of money is very miniscule. But some of the things that Daniel talked about were promises that have been broken. I think we're trying to work with the Navy to have the memorandum of understanding be for, for, what is that word? Interning, perpetuity, yes, rather than exhumative years. So if you can help us advocate for that, that would be good. Whenever I hear Hawaii dredging, I think, okay, you guys, guys are going to be dredging our fish pond because that really needs to be done for any more work to be, you know, we were just out there the other weekend bringing community groups in and pitching, but you know, the dredging and all of that kind of stuff, passing the, the shopping carts that come down from the river that's next to Prokai Shopping, Shopping Center. They're in a line in Pearl Harbor and the middle is so brittle that even the Navy guys can't pick it up. The ones get cut. It's going to have this, it's going to be a barge, it's going to have to claw that stuff up and be put on. But I would like to see more, this is here or more confirmed, working with OPI, local, IAF.
Yeah. Thank you for all those comments, Pam. And so I'd say this, this is our big leap forward to do that. This is the first opportunity, but it's not the only opportunity. So I want to address a few things that you mentioned here, if it's all right. First is the investment level. So the investment level that we have under this project, you know, was very much limited according to how much mitigation we had to offset. So that's what was the, that was the constraining factor. It wasn't just going for a dollar value target. It was about how much, how much impact we were going to have. And then in consultation with our regulatory partners to identify what the required compensatory mitigation is. So we were limited to that, but that's only just under this project. The MOU that you spoke of, we're setting up for a very important signing event on the 18th of November to, to sign that MOU. So we've, we haven't, we haven't publicized that yet, but don't mind sharing that here in advance. That MOU is, is more overarching in nature than just the funded portion under this one particular MilCon. It sets out into perpetuity a shared vision between the Navy and the native Hawaiian organizations involved at, at Locopaya, right? And, and so, which means that we're looking for follow-on opportunities and we think that that will come with follow-on projects at the waterfront that also require compensatory mitigation. So by no means are we limited by just what is being, what is programmed under this project. However, what is programmed under this project does represent a massive injection of investment that has never been there before. And at every step of the way, I also want to point out, you mentioned about Hawaiian dredging's piece of this. We, we have not contracted that out yet. So during design and all the design aspects and also the development of the solicitation, at every point, there will be, there will be this joint governance that occurs between the Navy and our partners, native Hawaiian partners, to ensure that we're developing our solicitations, our designs, and bringing on the right contractor. Could be these guys. Bringing on the right contractor, using the right methodologies and making sure that we're restoring this again according to the ancestral traditions and the indigenous knowledge that has to be brought to bear.
Encouraging these to work with the lead Hawaiian civic club.
Yes.
K. Howl, Lenny M.
That, that's who we're working with. Yeah.
They are the experts on that fish pond.
That's right. That, that's exactly where, so, so I, I meet with Auntie K. Howl and Uncle Bruce every week. And that, I was, I missed you. I'm sorry. But yeah, we are, we're, we're making really good strides forwards. We're very excited about this work.
I, I was wondering, when, when would be a good time to have you guys come back? Just give us a, like six months now?
Yeah. I, I think that's a, that's a pretty good target. Yeah, because, but, but in six months timeframe, we'll, we'll be doing pile driving. We'll, we'll be embarking on some major activities here. And we'll get to have any discussions about, you know, are you seeing something different than we talked about back in October? And then we can.
I think the biggest thing would probably be travel.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
If we have questions, in the meantime, we'll probably float them through Vic and Lydia and I'm just going to reach out to you guys. But yeah, I'm looking forward to having you guys back in six months.
That's right. We, we also brought our public affairs team here. So we'll, we'll make sure that they leave their contact with you so that, so the questions go directly to them. Yeah, awesome.
Let you know, and my apologies, I should have brought it with me. We do have a hotline phone number and email address that will be responded to. Any questions or concerns that you might have within 24 hours? I will email that to you directly and then all of you folks will have it. And you can ask us, community members, that may be in sort of any questions.
Thank you.
My name is Karen.
Okay, great. We have a question online? Nothing?
Who's Lawrence?
Who?
Lawrence.
Oh, go ahead, sir. Should the EIS be available? Would Karen would?
Certainly.
Give me the number of all of them that will be talking about us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question. Sorry. How did you use the authority? Job with the lottery? If they don't keep up with the size of the submarine, they can reach out to them.
Unfair.
It's one target. But negative I have was, well, if the state's going to build a stadium by 28, that's going to be impact how you can get it break this. Sleep now.
Yeah.
Did you guys live with 27, right?
That's right. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, yeah. So, so obviously.
I believe you thought it more than the state.
It, it, so, yeah. Yeah. Both excellent points, right?
It's just something.
Yeah, both excellent points.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. Excellent points. Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. Appreciate you guys' time. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And look forward to seeing you guys in six months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on. Residents and community, resident and community concerns. Does anybody have any questions, comments they would like to talk about in relation to IAF? All right. Nothing more? Sir, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, take a seat, please. Do you want to actually come in?
Yeah.
Yes. David.
Well, you mentioned it earlier tonight. Please, department, I appreciate that. But now that's, what's happening now is getting worse.
You said it was okay for a while, right?
Well, what happened in the last month and a month and a half or so, they, the city has an adopt a park program. And you let the people who were making a problem adopt the park. Not kidding. I wouldn't be here saying it. I don't lie. I see that video behind my yacht. See, I'll have a district park, I'm sorry. Well, like, May Rice District Park right now. But yeah, that's what I heard. So I really don't know what the program consists of, but my knowledge is you can live in IAF and you can adopt the park in Makal if you want to. You say anywhere. But it, and I understand that the people who adopted the park don't want to really say their real group name for whatever reason. And this I heard from park director or whatever that's, you know. She, she just gave me some information. She was nice enough.
All right. So when I went to visit it, right, there was a few things that, that we had talked about. And one was that there's no signage.
Yeah.
Right? So one of the things you can put on that list is that they, the signage, I'm saying, you know, alcohol or whatever.
Signage adds a different part.
Yeah, yeah. Because what, basically what happens is, is that the police will go out there, they won't be able to enforce anything because there's no signage. Right? So they can do the parking thing, right? Where they're blocking the parking lot, which I don't think they're doing anymore now, right? They're going to do that again.
The police have gotten better.
No, 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 no. The, the folks that you were talking about, like they would go and block the parking lot with cars.
Well, yeah, but now they're closing the gate while they're in there.
So it's neither the thing that.
Because they think because they adopted the park, the park is there.
I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
Okay, so like.
Somebody adopted the park?
That's what you're saying that the people.
The city has a program, you can, a group, whatever, you can adopt the park. I think it consists of cleaning the park maybe once every three months. Then you can, I guess, that makes it so that you can have your group sessions or whatever there when you clean the park, you can have your group picnics and stuff is, that's what I've heard.
Brain behind this theory?
The person who gave them just got the position. And right now, the person who was there before, I heard, is not there anymore. Don't know the reason. But the person that's there now is supposed to be temporary. But all, all in those from the group, one person works for the city and county. So they know the rules. And then a person who goes down and shows themselves to get the permit is a nurse. So it looks good.
Okay.
Sorry.
They're doing it the right way.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to.
Steve, because he followed the protocol.
Okay, Claire, you guys want to say what?
Adopt the park, it was only separate entity, city entity, but totally separate entity from the park. So Aloha Nani is a temporary, supposedly person that's working at, as the director. She is temporarily there, but she is, she was a former.
I know. I've dealt with her.
I don't think, he gives the permit for the.
No, she doesn't.
Adopt the park is a separate entity that was, you're supposed to adopt the area and take care of it and do maintenance. It does not allow you, especially for just use of the park.
Right.
And I know that we can do baseball and we adopt the park, doesn't mean that we get to practice there more than anybody else. Okay? The people that's closest to that park theme fell into disrepair because there's only one walking crew, scare of the park. So finally the.
Somebody just filled the.
On their own expense came and graded the park and puts it all.
You know who's using the fury? Yeah.
Well, they shouldn't be. Is done by a lot.
Yeah.
So she doesn't have to do that.
No.
That program. So whether these come in and check. We have people that wanted to, you know, take care of that summer mood problem, but they could never get into the park. So I think. Adopt the park program because they have to, and the following part, say what they did.
Right. So can you send, you got my email? Send me a write-up of everything that you're, you're saying tonight.
Okay.
And then I will contact this adopt the park agency and get them.
I got the guy's name. I can give you his name when I leave. I can give you the guy's name, we'll give the permit, the adopt the park permit, who's in charge.
I'll get it all, give it all to me and I'll, I'll work.
I'll give it to you.
All right, anything else, sir?
Nothing.
Anybody over here have anything?
Well, thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. We'll make that, from that again, ongoing with a lot of art. Okay. Any other, anybody else out there have anything else? Okay. Good. Okay, moving on. Senator John, or I'm sorry, State Governor Josh Green's representative, Janelle.
Good evening, Chair. I'm passing my camera to work, sorry. I don't know what was going on. But, um, there were no questions from, I'm sorry, this is Janelle Sunny. She, I'm representing the governor and the executive branch. There were no questions related to me from the last meeting. So I just have a, just a real brief update. You know, for the past two months, the governor and all the, the state departments have been focused on Maui wildfire disaster response. You know, from Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to National Guard, Department of Transportation, Department of Health, Public Safety, sent sheriffs, so, and Hawaii Housing and Finance Development Corporation, coordinated temporary housing to budget and finance because it all costs money. And DBED, the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. Actually, all the departments have been, you know, it's been a large response to help Maui recover or to respond and cover, recover. The state is currently moving from a response phase to a recovery phase and rebuilding the island's economy will be key for the long-term recovery and of the residents and the community. So there's more information in the governor's newsletter, which is available on the governor's website at governor.hawaii.gov. That's it. And I can relay any questions or concerns that the board or members of the public have.
Thank you for your brevity. Much appreciated. Francie, go ahead.
I have a concern about the threats that have been going to governor as well as Nani Maderas who put her resignation in. Has there been any investigations into who's actually giving those threats and any, anything being done about this kind of behavior in our, to our state officials?
I don't have any personal knowledge, but I can relay that question to the governor. And I, I believe it's being investigated. I'm not sure by who, whether it's the Attorney General's Office or other entities, but I will check. And we can get back to you on that.
If you please, I'd like to know that whether or not these individuals who are threatening state officials, whether they've been identified, not necessarily, I don't need to know who. I would just like to know that they have been identified or they're still trying to identify these people and what is being done about it.
They don't get arrested.
Because this is exact behavior and it should not be tolerated at all.
Yes.
Yes. Barbers, any other questions, Robbins? I have one for you. Myself and. Um, I have one for you, myself and another board member, we're, we're, since what happened with Lahaina, you know, we, we, uh, our community butts up against a heavily forested area as well. And we're wondering what is being done for our I A in terms of fire breaks? And the ability for us to, to basically hold off a similar situation that happened on Maui.
Sure, um, what, uh, do you have a more exact location that you're concerned about?
Um, actually, I would prefer if you, if you can put me in contact with somebody that is spearheading that effort.
Sure. It, it, does it, uh, but, uh, state, like, conservation land or, uh, that was? If it's depart, you know, if it's near highways, it's sometimes it's the Department of Transportation. If it's near conservation areas, it might be the Department of Land and Natural Resources, so, um, yeah.
There's not like a task force or something like that that would be assigned this kind of responsibility?
Not that I know of on Oahu yet, but there is a wildfire management organization that might have more information. Because they do, they do community work, I know they've been doing a lot on the west side because, uh, it's so dry out there that they meet actually with the community every month to talk about fire, uh, wildfire mitigations, things that the, the community can do. But, yeah, I, I'll get back to you on, find out, uh, if there is, there is any task force.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, board members, anything else? I mean, the topic, yeah, community members, any questions, sir, go ahead.
You know, there was an article on Boyu Dollar that stated that the Department of Education wasted millions of dollars on a solar-powered air conditioning system that had to be disconnected or doing a terrible job of cleaning classrooms. The DOE spent one hundred twenty-two million dollars for eight hundred eighty classrooms, and it comes out to one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars per classroom. But I guess the system wasn't ready. The same article also stated that it could have done the same thing as part of air conditioning in classrooms for two thousand dollars per classroom. But as far as the procedure and the protocol, um, and the state put in anything to, if this doesn't happen again?
Okay, I would have to, uh, yeah, refer that question to Department of Education, but I will follow up with them. Let's see.
Second topic, it had a follow-up article, but it came in like a month later, that the DOE chairman was, I guess, replaced. So, what I'm wondering, but it's not good, is that one chairman that was replaced, was he in charge of distributing one hundred twenty-two million dollars?
The DOE chairperson?
Yeah, he was replaced by another person. But I'm just wondering if the chairman was responsible for distributing a warning contract for one hundred twenty-two million dollars.
Was that the Board of Education chair?
Yeah, it said, um, New Hawaii DOE Chairman brings corporate expertise to the table. So, the person that was replaced, they didn't even go have to replace according to this article. The governor is probably another person who's replacing.
What article are you referencing, from where?
Civil B, okay, Civil B, okay.
Is that when Warren Haruki is, was replaced, uh, replaced through Svas? As a.
Yeah. He served for eight years, and during that time when they had that solar air conditioning system being installed, he was there for the whole eight years that this was all happening.
Okay, I can check with Department of Education.
All right, appreciate that, thank you. All right, uh, moving on, uh, if there was no other questions, we'll move on to Senator Arnie Hume's representative, Hank Casey's office.
Chairman, board members, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
All right, hi. Um, I shared the congressman's fourth quarter neighborhood board report in the chat, Chairman. I'm not sure if you guys can see what I'm sharing here right now with you folks.
One second.
Yeah, yeah.
So, while we're waiting on this, Nestor, um, can you hear us? Okay.
I can hear, I can hear you.
Uh, what's the status of the safe skies?
No, that's still making its way through, uh, trying to see if we can get a hearing on that. Since there's been turnover in the, uh, in the, uh, in the majority, uh, we're still waiting to see when they're not, uh, our friends across the aisle will hold a hearing on that measure, sir.
Are they, are they, are they, are any of them in support of that, or are they just, they got, yeah, another fish in the fry, basically?
No, no, we haven't had an indication of any major support, especially from the, from the new chairman of the committee that has jurisdiction on that. Um, yeah, uh, is the neighborhood board report able to be seen?
Yeah, sir, we can see the report.
Okay, good, I just want to go over quickly, Chairman, since you have an interest of time, want to, actually, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, the others, actually, across the state, who weighed in on their comments on these proposed draft rules regarding uh, tour helicopters that the FAA put out there a couple of months ago. The deadline to submit comments was October 6th. I'd like to thank Chairman for submitting his comments, I believe that was, uh, on his own, he wasn't submitting on behalf of the neighborhood board, I don't think. But this had to do with many aspects of how tour helicopters run their operations throughout the state. Whether it's, uh, altitude, whether or not we want to go with a minimum of fifteen hundred feet above, uh, above ground. And safety equipment and pilot training, all that, uh, all the other aspects that go into operating tour helicopters. Congressman submitted his own comments on the draft rules, uh, which would go into effect next spring if adopted. He, um, did not particularly care for any of the draft rules that were being proposed. Those were her, those, those were his comments. I want to address the situation that you just had spoken about, Chairman, about wildfire, wildfire mitigation, of course. Now, the congressman has discussed this, uh, concern in light of what's happened with Lahaina. And he's spoken with the, uh, the mayor, I'm not quite sure if people know that the mayor has instructed his team at City Hall to take a look at any wildfire mitigation in the city and county of Honolulu. So, we're not quite sure who is taking lead at the city for that, Mr. Chairman. You may want to contact the mayor's office to see what, uh, he's, what his team is doing to mitigate that. We have been hearing these kinds of concerns all over the county. This was a discussion, um, that was, uh, that had taken place in your sister neighborhood board out at Makakilo Kapole. Um, and I, I thought I saw, saw a comment on it, uh, on, on social media regarding Pacific Palisades, which is, uh, sort of your neighbor there across the valley. So, it's all over the island.
The chairman of Pearl City is really hot on this right now.
Yeah, exactly.
Very, very is.
You know, any drive around the island, you can see how we are in need of, uh, good rain here, all over the island. So, uh, the congressman has been trying to address this, sitting down with the mayor and offering any help that the mayor would solicit from the federal government, yeah, once the mayor has come up with some kind of a mitigation plan. Uh, the federal government across the country is, well, it's not just because of Lahaina, but because of what happened at Paradise in California. And, uh, you know, there's been wildfires all across the country. So, uh, there was a, a measure that was offered up in the House about how to deal with, uh, federal lands, especially under the jurisdiction of the Department of the Interior and the Department of Agriculture. Uh, see what they could do to mitigate, uh, any wildfires that are happening, uh, under their jurisdiction, yeah? Uh, it's called the Accurately Counting Risk Elimination Solutions, or the Acres Act, uh, regarding those lands under the jurisdictions of those two departments. Uh, that was in the House, I'm trying to see whether or not the Senate will take that up as well. Uh, congressman also wants to make sure that people understand that he does address individual concerns there, uh, that come up from his constituents. I, for example, take, uh, concerns from constituents regarding, um, Office of Personal Management, especially those who, uh, are seeking, uh, their retirement benefits. I deal a lot with those questions to the Office of Personal Management, also deal with the FAA, obviously. Um, and I have taken the Veterans Portfolio, now that our staffer has, uh, left the DC office, I have taken over the Veterans Portfolio. So, I take a lot of, uh, concerns from the veterans. Congressman is looking to see whether or not he'll have a roundtable, virtual roundtable, uh, dealing with veterans' concerns, hopefully we can do that in November. So, look for, look to see that coming in November, that can be done, uh, on his schedule. I do want to, uh, come up with one other thing. There's a deadline that's coming up for young men and women who are interested in, um, trying to get a congressional, uh, endorsement to enter any one of the four service academies. That deadline to submit an application to our office is October 13th, uh, which is just three days from now, so anybody who's interested, young men and women, you want to see if they can get a congressman, congress member to endorse their, uh, application to one of the four service academies, we need to get an application in by October 13th. That's the deadline. With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Uh, board members, any questions for Representative Casey's office? Or community?
Hey, hey, Steve, I got one for.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hey, uh, this is just an observation comment. I filed through PACT with the VA recently. And it was a trying experience and it took two weeks. First, it wouldn't accept my ID to register so you could even get through to VA. I finally gave up on the first one and went through on the second one. And it's not that I don't know IT, it wouldn't accept a JPEG, JPEG, it wouldn't accept a PNG. I finally got through, registered, did most of my application. I didn't have one-piece information, so I broke off, and when I come back to pick it up again, my application was gone. I was extremely unhappy, I just went away. I came back two weeks later before it was cutting off, and I was going to put in and start over, and my application was there. But just dealing with the VA was a fiasco. I did get through it, so I don't have an issue that you need to address, but it shouldn't be that hard. There's a lot of older people out there trying to deal with it that don't have the IT experience that I have. And I had difficulty with it, and I shouldn't have. It's just an observation, you said you were going to take over VA, I just had to speak.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mike. Uh, there's been a lot of frustrations, not just with trying to apply for PACDAC benefits, but just the whole spectrum of benefits being offered by the FAA. Mike, uh, we can talk offline or maybe send me your email in the chat. I can still track your application for the PAC benefits if you want, this office will be glad to do it, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, with that, uh, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it. Tell the congressman, thank him for his efforts. Okay, Senator Wapai's office. He's busy with. Um, Senator Elafante's office.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, members, this is Jan Salcedo with Senator Elafante, hope everybody's having a good evening together. Um, just wanted to say we have provided the legislative update, there's no additional information on there, and we'd like to stand on our report. Thank you.
Board members, community members? Thank you, Representative Lietzkyama's office. Nothing heard. Hey, Representative Awu's office? I'm sorry, I, I'll get it. Uh, okay, nothing heard, okay. Representative Kong's office? All right, all right, and, uh, Mayor Representative Apu Miles? What time, what you talk? Apu?
Evening, Chair, sorry about that, I mean, uh, some technical difficulties. I have a report that just, I just lost and I apologize for the delay. Uh, give me a second, and if you can come back to me, please, I'm, I apologize.
Okay, well, I, in the meantime, while you're looking for that, um, I, I wanted to give props to a few departments. Uh, I had them clear some, like, there's some brush along the, uh, Halava Street, uh, they came in, did a great job. Uh, also, uh, there's graffiti along, um, uh, Salt Lake Boulevard, the bridge that goes across Halava, I think within three days after I submitted the report, they covered up that graffiti. So, so they're right on it, did a great job, so I wish we'd pass that on to those departments, and, uh, that's much appreciated from the community.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Just let me open this up. Here it is. Okay, just a couple of quick, uh, announcements, I know we're running, um, late a little bit. Um, good evening, everyone, sorry for the delay, uh, mayor's stance on enforcing public welfare laws. Uh, the ACLU lawsuit seeks to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws uh, and take away the city's ability to enforce laws that protect and safeguard the public. City disagrees with ACLU's lawsuit. Homelessness is a complex and pressing issue that affects all of us, so the mayor wants to assure everyone that the city is committed to addressing this issue with compassion and empathy, and will focus on finding long, long-term solutions. Uh, Safe and Sound Waikiki Initiative marks its first year. On September 5th, Mayor Blangiardi joined prosecutor attorney Steve Alm, uh, council chair Tommy Waters, and various other community and law enforcement leaders to celebrate the anniversary of, anniversary of the initiative. Uh, a trio of affordable housing updates, September was a busy month when it comes to the city's plan to help facilitate the creation of new affordable housing units. Uh, here are some of the projects we've been working on, Parkway Village in Kapole, Kia Pie Place in Kailua, and Halewaiolu in Chinatown. Uh, Safety Tips for Fire Prevention Week, Fire Prevention Week is October 8th through October 13th, but wildland fire season is year-round in Hawaii, and drought conditions have increased the threat of fire across our island home. Visit Honolulu Fire Department's Instagram and Facebook pages every day during Fire Prevention Week for tips. Uh, Oahu's parking meters get an upgrade, all across Oahu, the city's credit card-friendly on-street parking meters have been upgraded to better serve the public. These 4G connected parking meters are modernized, uh, to allow users to pay for parking safely, securely, and quickly. Uh, and by the end of the year, many of the coin-only meters will be upgraded to the new system as well. Uh, December, September 2023 edition of Mayor's Highlights Newsletter can be found at oneohaku.org/newsletter, I'll put that link in the chat, that is my report, uh, thank you guys for listening.
Board members, any questions, comments for Mayor's office, or Mayor's office?
Yeah, I've got one, Steve. A couple of weeks back, there was a, an issue in Kahala where somebody come up out of a storm drain and so, on private property, and facilities management come in and welded it shut. Uh, some years back, I had an issue of, I have a storm drain pipe that runs under my property, and there were roots that were coming up to block it. And I asked how that would be addressed, and I was told that facilities management did not address storm drains on private property. So, I'm confused, what is the policy? And I'd also like to get the phone number that he called at facilities management to get service in three days.
Well, I'll see what I can do to get you that number for, for next month. Um, I don't know the answer to this, um, so I'll have to check back with the.
Okay, I didn't expect you to have the answer, but, but it was an issue, and I was told that they didn't address it. And then when I saw this, it just surprised me, that's complete reversal, so.
It actually surprises me. Sorry, Mike, it also surprises me because I have a storm drain on my property, um, and they clean it, they clear it, so, I don't.
It, it should be the city's system that kind of has an easement over your property, and so the city is responsible for that maintenance. But let me, can you get your information to Steve, and then he'll get it to me, and we'll make sure we'll check the property for the easement?
Okay, because that's what I thought. You have an easement. That's your easement. You go do what you want. But when I tell you that, you know, there's roots growing in it, and it's beginning to be impeded, then that shouldn't be my responsibility.
Correct.
And yet, at that time, I was told it was. But that was a previous administration.
Yeah, so I don't want to say it's the responsibility of DFM. I don't know the situation, but we'll definitely look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny?
I just had a follow-up question about the canal situation from before. The same thing that Claire had raised that's happening by Ka'aua'ia is happening in between Ka'aua'ia and the old Sears portion of Porridge, and we've found out that it's city, but the last response was that they're in the waiting for them to clean it. But isn't there some sort of accountability? Like, there's shopping carts. There's all kinds of stuff that's just, like, breaking down in there.
So on the three-one-one site, okay, that's right. Anytime I need work done, I just go to the three-one-one site, right? I don't know. I was gonna. Yeah, and I submit tickets.
Yeah, I've never got to know response.
Wow.
And the response that I got during our was that they don't know how to clean it.
Because there, well, when you submit a ticket on there, though, there's a natural poll down that says, "Clear streams," like, clear revenue from streams or whatever. So it's interesting that they would even have that if that's not the response, and they will do it.
Can you get that information of that ticket that you submitted to me, and then I'll follow up with DFM. We'll make sure it gets on the report for next month?
Sure, yeah. Like, because we brought it up previously, and then when you discussed it in the meeting, you just said that they didn't know how to get the equipment in there.
I do remember that issue, but I apologize. I don't remember what the resolution was.
Is there an easement along there that they can utilize? Because like, where I'm at, they have an easement. It's like ten, fifteen feet wide where they can actually bring a brick and end and, like, pull stuff out, they need to.
Yeah, they would just need to bump the Tesla line, so it's like on the side where, I don't know, because they put in all of that electric equipment to have the Tesla station, the charging station on that side.
But you need to check.
I was just gonna say, if I could just, after the meeting, if you could let me know the specific location, I'll make sure that it goes into the report and gets to Apu.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board?
I will just mention real fast, we did, you know, we did make that site visit out to the park, right? We took a look at that erosion issue. It is something that DPR is aware of. And I don't have an answer for you, but, you know, anytime you guys want to bring that concern up, you know, kind of freaky wheel kind of thing, right? If you guys keep bringing it up as a concern, you know, maybe they'll invest some time into it, or I could keep coming out, you know, try to get DFM out there or whatever, so just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, go ahead.
Even as far as all these electric vehicles, does the city have anything in place as far as procedures or protocols of disposing of batteries? Are they all shipped off island? Are they gonna take up our landfill?
Talking about the disposal of city electric vehicles?
Yeah, electric vehicle or batteries, the lithium ion batteries. There's a lot of electric vehicles on island. Sooner or later, we're gonna have our own models of cars that need to be disposed of. Does the city have certain procedures and protocols to dispose of those batteries?
Yeah, so you just are asking about privately-owned vehicles. I'm not sure what the procedure is. I can look into it and get back to you.
It is gonna be a toxic waste. I'm not sure if the city is looking forward at what they're planning on doing when all those batteries start coming off. They throw it away, or the part that they throw away.
It's the dealership, the dealerships, like the bolts and everything goes to the dealership.
Oh, it's Tesla, all those.
Yeah, it goes back to the dealership.
Typically, that's the case, but, yeah.
Okay. You'll look into it and then get back with us. Yeah, I'm with you on this one. I thought it was a dealership thing. I know somebody who actually had it replaced.
I work at a dealership.
You know, like, solid vehicles get toxic.
The dealership, the batteries, it's in itself, it's a battery. It goes back to the dealership.
Yeah, my friend had his battery replaced, and the dealer took it.
Oh. This gentleman said that they're finally opening the junkyard, so the junkyard is trying to find a way to dispose.
Came up with a ball and a brief, and then do the ball maybe three weeks ago.
Oh, but you don't hear about it.
Lot of junk, because they take the whole batteries and, exactly how he's saying, it's, you're trying to find a way to dispose of it, the correct way to dispose of it. They correct their way to ship it out, but.
I'll find out, Steve, at the dealership. I've seen.
But the junkyard is putting it out.
It has to be the T1, because the regular landfill, like, wouldn't take any.
Okay. Well, how could you just, like, find out if there's, like, some kind of program out there?
I can see what the city is planning on doing about our fleet that we're trying to, you know, increase the use of electric vehicles, but private side, all of those are what I can do.
If disposal of these was involved or what, though? Let's.
EMV.
Okay. So is there somebody within DMV that manages this or tracks it?
I would think it's the responsibility of the, you know, the owner or the dealership. But in cases where there's abandoned vehicles, you know, there must be a procedure in place.
Right. Okay. And EMV would be the individuals that would deal with that, right?
Yeah, so EMV, right, they manage all of the wastewater system, the treatment plants, and the solid waste disposal, right? So HPower, all of that.
Okay, cool. All right. All right. Any other questions? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, Apu.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry. I do have one other question for you. I asked the state folks about the fire, the fire breaks and things like that. What's the, and they mentioned that the governor's office is looking into it?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so there, thank you for reminding me. I was planning on bringing this up. So there is kind of a task force that started, and it's more so, I feel like, led by HFD. They have, I think they've started putting brakes on city property where they're able to. I know it's a collaborative effort. I don't have all the details, but there is a task force effort that has been initiated by mayor. And so I can look into it and get you more information.
Appreciate that. Mo, you can.
Yeah, so I actually had another neighborhood board who asked the same specific question. I think it was Maka Kila about fire break, like mitigation and stuff, wildfire stuff. And, yeah, so I reached out to DM and HFD. Yeah, all got referred to HFD, and so they're like the main tacklers of this and addressing, like, the fire hazards at the buildup. And so what I'll do is I'll take that information, all included in your guys' report as well, so you guys can get an updated one, but I'll send you the information that I got from the other boards as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Well, there you go. Got all the right people around me already. Okay, great. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Okimoto and Cadera. I know they're both in Korea, but they're opposite of, uh, Member Okimoto's office.
Yes. Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, all right. Thank you for having me, Chair, Board, as well as the community. Just wanted to keep this brief. Let us leave update. There's two bills that have passed, Bill twenty. That's the new retroactive, I'm sorry, new restrictive parking zones. Some community members had wanted to see that. It sunsets in five years, so it isn't permanent. But it does allow for a permitting system for people who aren't able to park in front of their homes. Bill forty-six passed that bans all flavored tobacco products, including e-liquids and vapor. I know everyone was talking about the emergency preparedness. There are three resolutions that we're hearing upcoming. Resolution twenty-three dash two-nine-three, I'm sorry, two-three-nine. That's setting the qualifications for the Director of Emergency Management. Resolution two-three dash two-forty, that's asking the administration for an updated emergency preparedness plan. And Resolution twenty-three dash two-four-one, where we're going to establish a working group on emergency preparedness. I know that the council member has actually had a couple hearings on that, where they've brought in HPD and HFD as well. I think they plan on having more in the future. Some of the current events that we had, went to the nine-eleven ceremony at the Halei, the Town Hall on Homelessness for Iya and Pearl City, and we recognize the Pearl City Shopping Merchants Association, who have done a lot of good for the community, as well as they've just donated $250 check to an organization who does the Bike Path, monthly Bike Path cleanup. I know that we had a, I can go to a couple of things. I know we're running late, so I can take questions now.
Danny?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying we'd never.
Okay, okay. Community members? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hey. Have a good evening, too. Councilmember Cordero's office.
Hello, good evening, Chair Wood, Board members and community members. I will attempt to share my screen here. So we have Councilmember Cordero's written report. I've also put in a link in the chat. But just a few highlights. You'll see the picture from the Iya Pearl City Town Hall meeting. And regarding the Pearl Harbor Historic Trail, there's going to be a pilot project which will improve a section of the trail. You'll see that they'll replace the concrete and add signing, striping, and lighting. And another highlight is there's a Bike Path cleanup on October twenty-eighth. And if you would like to participate or more information on it, you can contact Kyle Takuda, and I have his email, we have his email in the report. And then last highlight is the city is now offering ferrochicken removal services to private property owners at a reduced cost. And you can see that property owners can call the number listed, eight oh eight four five six seven seven one six, if you want more information on this program. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Mark, any questions for Councilmember Cordero's office? Okay, nothing heard. Many? Any questions for Councilmember Cordero's office? Nothing heard. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your report. Okay, reports, reports by board members regarding attendance at other meetings affecting any neighborhood board business. Tracy, you got something?
Yeah, hello? You guys can hear me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Hey, so I just wanted to update everybody about the measure that we passed last month, the no support for that home care operator. So I attended the hearing on the thirteenth, the day after our neighborhood board meeting last month. None of the community members had showed up, but they were given another chance to make an appearance before a hearing that was set for October second. So there was a lot of community members that actually showed up. So I gave them our copy of the letter that you gave me for showing that we had no support for the project. And the community members had said they tried to log on during the September meeting, but wasn't able to do so because the web address that was there at that house, it was incorrect, so none of them could log on. So I just wanted to give that update, and also, Chair, can you follow up with DPP to see whether or not that particular CUP was approved or not?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other, any other meetings you guys attended? Heard. Okay, we're moving on. The Iya Community Symposium, Claire?
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to reiterate that we are having a meeting next Monday at seven o'clock. I wanted to again, that I have parade, if you want to sign up for it, if you know a group that would like to sign up and join us, just go to iyparade@yaku.com. We encourage everyone, and the day of the parade on November, December ninth, we're also having a blood bank, Bloodmobile here to do blood bank donations. I normally coordinate vaccine, the COVID vaccination, and like, I have, to date, I've reached out to them, but they haven't, the people that we work with on it, and even the Department of Health, they haven't scheduled any free. You know, there's a sale, library sale. Check our website. By the Iya Book, the Iya yesterday's, it is. Here. But the , it's on the key. This has passed by the pass. Each holiday up there came through on Friday. Supposedly, they are going to this week, nineteen thirty, to treat the area of the strawberry. They plan on seventeen sixteen, groundbreaking a blessing from one to three. To our highest media association website. Inviting everybody. Well, but it's gonna be here, one at three. Same happen. That means from then on, they're gonna start constructing of course, how do you use for safety. Yeah. People are already asking. I think what's important to remember is change the name of the site to Aloha. They will leave the, and probably will leave the, the house of the sugar man. So, you know, the , I mean, what was here, the center of Iya before, but it's also the Aloha in it. And I mean, you know, just say, "House of the Sugar Man," that's really, that's Aloha is the love we have for this area. And it's been twenty-three years. Better on the love. Shit. Um, it happened. Okay, that's relevant. One. Of this. Sometimes I get by this. So, but there's something to talk. But anyway. One to three.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, any questions for the board? All right, thank you, Claire. Okay, committees, executive, I have nothing. Transportation, chemo? Okay, chemo, okay. Land, community relations, publicity? Parks and Rec, Paul's not here. Planning and zoning, chemo? Restoration Advisory Board, Military, Intergovernmental. Uh, hello, can't hear. Hello? Yep, we can hear you. Okay, you have anything for Red Hill Pill Tings?
No, nothing, Chair.
Thank you. Hey, Danny, education.
Yes, um, Sunday afternoon. Um, and then I just said locally. Our last birthday of the year.
Did you, did you have to talk to Anthony about, like, when I could come back down?
Yeah, I can schedule.
Just let you know? Okay. Okay. Next meeting will be scheduled on November fourteenth, Tuesday at seven PM here. And, uh, on relax. Like a re, uh, there's a level, we'll rebroadcast, and look at the notes here to find out where that's at, and then our files, there's a link for that. With that, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for.
Thank you.
10 minutes to spare today.
Yeah.
Hey, Steve. It's Mike. At the next meeting, suggest, suggested people come up to the microphone to speak. Have one chair designated for people that are gonna speak, and they come up and sit in that chair and talk. When you, you. When you're coming in remotely, you, you're missing half the meeting.
Hey, Mike, just to, uh, just to give you a heads up, uh, we were testing out a new audio system in person tonight. There were, there were five instances that we cut out completely, and a lot of those are causing the audio issues, but definitely, people coming up to the mic will help, uh, that would help, but then I will run some tests before next month, and that were, that were good to go with no interruptions.
Okay, cuz there were several things at this meeting I missed. Uh, Tracy, I missed everything she said. And Claire, just a few minutes ago, she was talking about COVID, and then she just dropped out. And I was particularly interested in what she had to say because she sponsored shots before.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta iron out the new audio system here, cuz it was dropping in and out.
Sorry, you guys for the test.
No, 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 no.
Guys for the guinea pig, really.
Okay, ju, just trying to make a suggestion to help.
Yeah.
Okay, good night.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.